Okay, seeing it is 4:30, let's call the meeting to order. So, welcome to the special meeting of the Olentangy School Board of Education, the legal counsel interviews. I guess Mr. Johnson, Caldwell.
Mr. Dunbar.
Yeah, here.
Ms. Fiesel.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. See none.
Ms. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. Okay, so, one, thank you for coming in early. 4:30, it'll be a long haul tonight. But procedurally, we have three firms coming in. One at 4:30, one at 5:00, and one at 5:30. We adjourn after the 5:30, and then dinner. There'll be food available in the break room. I guess we can't eat together in the break room, so it's not like a meeting in the break room.
We can, although we don't talk business.
Right, that's right. So, we can eat together, but no talking agenda either. So, keep that in mind.
I don't want to eat with you guys. Just like when we all get together for graduation.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Well, most of us. Go ahead.
So, first up is Scott Shriver in Olentangy, if I said that correctly. So, the way we're going to try to structure these, I give the firm five minutes, seven minutes to brief overview of their proposal. Any comments you want to add. Fifteen, twenty minutes of questions from the board. And then any kind of concluding remarks from the firm. Okay, so we're going to get some call-up. Greg Scott. Greg, I assume you're speaking for the firm?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. It's nice to see all of you. Thanks for the opportunity. Yes.
I'm sorry. Very good. Everyone have their materials, the proposal materials?
We do have extra copies if anybody needs.
Make sure you do.
Thank you very much. Yes, it's good to get reacquainted here. I have with me my law partner Julie Martin right here. Julie is a native of central Ohio. She attended Ohio State, graduated summa cum laude in a math, in the math department, and then went to Harvard Law School. And so, you're wondering, why isn't she selling us exotic derivatives? She had the good sense to forsake Wall Street and the White House and to do school law because she enjoys it. And next to her is Pat Schmitz, whom you should know from our work. And Pat has been both an associate at Brecker &amp; Eckler at one time and associate deputy director, deputy director of the Legal Services at OSBA before he came to work for us some time ago, and Pat is a partner. Since you're giving us some time to make a presentation, we'll do that, and then I guess you're going to have questions, so I'll dive right in. I'm going to take a few minutes and then turn it over to Julie, and then Pat can do a summation at the end. As you know, our proposal does not cover, and our work for the district does not cover certain things. We do not do finance work. We don't, we are not bond counsel, and we have not done construction contracts and litigation. We have focused on labor relations, labor negotiations, employee relations, and general school law, which is everything from board procedure, contracts with your top administrators, sunshine law, things like that. Actually, that is true with most of our central Ohio clients. We represent an awful lot of school districts in central Ohio and around the state, about 100 altogether, and almost all of them have Brecker or somebody else as bond counsel. So, it's pretty common for firms, for school districts to know both firms. I think probably one of the key points that we would raise about continuing our relationship is that we have, we're part of your institutional memory. We have done work, that nature of work, labor negotiations, employee relations, and general school law for 15 years. During that time, you've had four superintendents, four treasurers, many union representatives, union leaders, and many board members. We have been involved and are intimately familiar with the negotiation of labor contracts over that period, how they came to be, the same with superintendent contracts, the same with exits of employees from the district, everything from dog catchers to superintendents and treasurers. And so, part of the value we bring to the table, and I'll let Julie talk about our business model and why we put an emphasis and have a passion toward cost-effective legal representation, but one of the extra values you get is the fact that we are part of your institutional memory here. And with the growing district and a dynamic district like that, that is of some value. Back in 2002, for example, we negotiated a joint committee with the OTA that would review and make a report about alternate compensation systems, including pay-for-performance for teachers, long before the legislature even had that as a gleam in its eye. Scott Davis's contract, when he came here as superintendent, a third of his initial compensation was at rest. It was based on performance factors. So, those are two classic examples of how I'm familiar with how things developed in this district, how they came to be, and what happened with those. So, we like working for Olentangy, and we worked for Worthington. You can see it there, Upper Arlington, Gehanna, host of districts in central Ohio. It has been enjoyable to both know board members and to work with you and the treasurers and superintendents here over the years, and to watch the district change. So, we'd like to continue being part of that institutional memory and bringing that value to bear on the district. Let me turn it over to Julie to have a couple words about our business model.
Good afternoon, everybody. I don't think I have met, or I've met all of you at this point, but I haven't had this much opportunity to work with you directly. I've done, most of the work I've done with the district is in your student services group, and so have worked largely with Betsy Hutchinson and Chris Andres. And as Greg mentioned, we really pride ourselves on providing quality legal services in a cost-effective manner, and that's built on two pillars of what our business model is and then what our client service model is as well. On our business model, all three of us, Pat and Greg and I, have worked at large law firms and then have been in our small boutique firm, our firm now, and as you know, we're still there because we think that is a better business model to effectively serve a public sector, a school district. And part of that is really because we purposely do not have high overhead that we then would have to pass on to a school district in rate structures. We deliberately are in Class B office space. It's nothing fancy because we find that our work is to come out to you. We meet you where you are. We come out here to your district, to your buildings, to work with you. We don't have layers of bureaucracy of PR people, advertising people, business managers, MBAs. We have a lean practice because our focus is public sector schools. So, we don't have that overhead then that gets put into a rate structure that gets passed on to you. And you can see that in the rate structures that we have quoted to you in our response to your request for qualifications. I will say, though, we don't skip on things, skimp on things that we think are very important to the quality of our practice. So, our technology is second to none and up to speed because we think that's an important way to communicate with all of you and communicate with your administrators, too. So, we really try to have that balance in our business model of making sure that it's cost-effective when we're providing you with that legal service. We also, in providing that service, value what we believe is important to all of you and to the administrators that we often work with, which is prompt, responsive, and practical legal service. We like to think that we are second to none in our legal pedigrees, and you have all of our biographies in your materials, and that's very important. We think we can analyze issues with critical thinking, and we could write you a great law review article on any issue, but we know that's not what you want and not what you need. You need those practical answers when we provide you with advice. And we think that's a way that we really separate ourselves from some other firms, that we're able to take those complicated, complex legal issues and then help you make decisions to reach your goals and practically work with you. So, we're very concerned about making sure we're able to do that and that we do it in a responsive way. As Greg said, we've got a lot of institutional memory with you. We also have those relationships with you where we know then information about you and can work with you in giving you that practical legal advice. It's something that we really personally enjoy as well, is those relationships. I enjoy talking to Chris Andres and Betsy Hutchinson and being able to work with them on the issues. I know what's going on in your district. I know what the trends are here, what we're looking for, and what your goals are as a board of education as we move forward with what I do with the student issues, but really with respect to all aspects of our practice. And with our experience, as Greg mentioned, working with other districts like you, high-performing districts, we can see what trends are outside of this school district and bring that to bear when we work with you. There are issues that you may be encountering for the first time, but it's not the first time we've encountered them. We have seen them before and can bring them and bring our expertise to that, which is something that we do value doing and enjoy working with all of you. I'm going to turn it over to Pat to kind of make a couple other remarks, and I know you're probably anxious to ask us some questions, too.
Well, again, good afternoon. I'd like to highlight some of the assistance that we've provided to your board and district in the last several years in a couple of different areas and to illustrate how we've provided the district quality with efficiency. I'd start with our service in the area of labor and employment law. And I'd like to share some data and a few examples with you to illustrate this. Since 2006, we've successfully separated, helped the district get separation of 26 out of 26 employees who have been investigated for serious disciplinary misconduct. We've also been strategically efficient in doing this because 23 of those employees resigned without forcing the district to go to a hearing. To share a little bit of further evidence of efficiency, in many of these cases, we've used computer forensic evidence, researched court records, and used other investigative techniques in part of our assistance to the district in working as a team with your administration. Another example that I would share is that when union officials are investigated for disciplinary misconduct, they typically fight back very hard. The employee and the union will claim that somehow the union is, or the union official is being discriminated against for union activity. But this district several years ago investigated a former OPSI president for misconduct, and your administration with our assistance conducted an airtight investigation that caused that former OPSI president to resign, and there were no grievances, there were no labor arbitrations, or no lawsuits, or unfair labor practice charges, simply a resignation. Now, I mentioned that we have helped get resignations in 23 of 26 cases. When the other three of those cases did go to hearings, we won three of, all three of those hearings, two involving teachers, one involving a classified employee. None of those cases was a slam dunk, but we won each one so convincingly that even though the employee's economic livelihood was at stake, there were no appeals. We feel that we've developed a successful partnership with this board and your administration to develop a positive employment culture in this district. Over the last seven years, on average, you've had fewer than four serious disciplinary investigations. And we feel that our 100% success rate in these cases has supported this board, your administration, and you have roughly 1,000, 1,000 employees who are dedicated to serving kids and following the rules. I'd like to cite a few other examples in the area of labor negotiations. I've helped negotiate classified employee agreements for the last seven years. You have two OPSI contracts, and they both have employer-friendly language without a lot of fluff. I would give you a few examples this evening. Both contracts have strong management rights clauses that say only the specific written and expressed terms of the contract are binding on the district. This gives your supervisors and administrators flexibility in personnel matters. Both contracts also have two-year probationary periods, which is very unusual in the public sector, something along the lines of a 90-day probationary period may be more common. A two-year probationary period in your contracts, though, again, gives your supervisors tremendous discretion with scheduling, discipline, non-renewal, and other personnel actions. We've also helped the district, again, working with this board and your administrative team, negotiate cost-saving measures on the economic side, including health insurance reforms and holding line on wages during the heart of the Great Recession. We also, in the last seven years, have won three out of three contract interpretation arbitrations. Finally, in the area of general advice and counsel, we've advised the district on a variety of matters. Just to give you a few examples, we've been involved in drafting, reviewing vendor contracts, advising the district on human resources issues, helping principals with matters that sometimes create some anxiety on their part, like student record requests and records, subpoenas for testimony. We've represented the district in workers' compensation matters, and since Olentangy became self-insured in 2009, we again have won 100% of contested claims. And we've assisted in the day-to-day contract administration for all of your labor contracts, including fielding questions on issues with economic consequences such as layoffs. In providing this assistance to your district, we don't overstaff. Instead, our practice intentionally is to assign one qualified, experienced attorney who will give you the assistance that you need in the most cost-effective manner possible. I'd like to also emphasize a few things briefly before I stop and let you ask some questions for all three of us. We pride ourselves on being accessible, and any law firm could come in and tell you that they're accessible, but this board has experience with us, and you know how accessible we can be. Within the last two or three years, we've responded to emails and phone calls from board presidents about time-sensitive issues, and if those calls come up on Christmas Eve or an email on Christmas Day or New Year's Eve, we're available whenever you need us. I would again emphasize the value of institutional history and memory that we can continue to provide to Olentangy. But all this being said, we're always looking for ways to better serve our clients. We view this interview process as an opportunity to get your input on how we can do that, and we look forward, hopefully, to building on what we believe has been a successful relationship. And at this point, I would invite Greg and Julie to join me back up at the podium, and welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So, questions?
I have one. I do.
Stacy?
This district is all about change, and just like with our committees, you know, the development committee used to be focused on getting land and building buildings. I think the legal landscape has changed. So, what do you think with your exterior knowledge and interior knowledge, are the real legal challenges facing us over the next five years? And how are you posed as a firm to handle those better than another firm?
Well, one, I'll make a couple comments, and then I'll let them. Labor relations seem to have matured a fair amount over the last 20 years in terms of, we don't argue about should there be a grievance procedure? Yes, it's better to have things done expeditiously and resolved rather than go to court. Obviously, there is a lot of dynamic, there are a lot of dynamic factors in public education these days. The alternatives to traditional K-12 schools, whether it's funded education with community colleges and OSU or community schools, voucher programs, what have you. The legislature has changed many laws in a way that's been favorable to districts. One of the things we did last year in your contract was respond to that by negotiating a teacher's contract, an expeditious procedure for resolving disputes about whether the new evaluation procedure is being complied with because in order to make brief decisions or personnel decisions, you don't want something festering for six months or a year. And I'm using that model, and others are using that in other districts as a result. So, there's a lot of legislation we've been responding to.
Speaking a little bit to student services or primarily special education issues, and what's interesting there is that the law actually is not as dynamic in that area as it is in the employment area with respect to our state legislature because most of our student issues, there's some state law, but there's a significant amount of federal law, too. What we see through the course, and that law has not changed significantly. What we do see, though, from the course of working with Olentangy, is we're seeing your parents becoming more and more invested in their children's education, having high expectations for their children and high expectations for you, too, as a board of education in the district and how you serve those children. That's an area where we have a lot of experience, and what we've done is some in services and some ways to kind of get your staff ready for some, from some changing expectations from parents. And so, I've had an opportunity to do that in a smaller context with some of your administrators, but also with staff when it's necessary. When we see some issues, we go in, we talk about, all right, when you have those parents with those expectations, unfortunately, legal conflicts are going to arise. There's going to be a conflict or a tension, and how can we assist as you're having to navigate the parents' expectations, the rights of their children, rights of other children, and then just fiscal responsibility to your taxpayers? And that's where we've been able to give that advice from our experience working with other districts that are similarly situated, like Upper Arlington, Beckslay, Worthington, Grandville. And we're able to take that experience and work with your staff on those issues.
In the area of personnel and employee discipline investigations, I think the change that we're going to see is the continuation of a trend with the use of sophisticated investigation techniques, including the use of computer forensics evidence, partnering with third-party vendors to assist with investigations, and I would expect that we would see that trend continue in the next five years.
Yep. Well, I, first of all, I can vouch for the accessibility because when I was the board president, I was the one emailing and calling on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve because we had a board issue.
We didn't want to name names, but it was Julie.
That came up. It wasn't me personally, but the district as a whole, we had to deal with an issue in a timely manner. So, I certainly appreciate that accessibility. There's also been times when Greg has come to my office because we've had to discuss matters, and so he has come over to my office, which is downtown. So, I certainly appreciate I didn't have to take any time away to leave my office to go meet with them. But my question for you all is, what makes your firm the best fit for Olentangy?
I think it's because we do the same kind of work for districts that figure profile. So, we have a lot of volume of our work, as from Worthington, Upper Arlington, Grandville, Beckslay, and some districts like that in suburban Cincinnati, in Toledo, like Sylvania, and Wyoming City Schools down in Cincinnati. So, we have a volume of the, in Julie's area, for example, what she does, she doesn't do exclusively, especially, but in special ed area, parent expectations and the dynamics often are similar in high-achieving districts and affluent districts. And so, we have a lot of that over and over again, and so we get a lot of similar issues. Secondly, it's proximate to where we are, but that may, I mean, to where we are, I live in Dublin, Pat lives here, Julie lives in Upper Arlington. That probably is true with the others, too, I suppose. The, I think it dovetails, the answer dovetails a little bit with Stacy's question, which is one of the things from a client standpoint, from a business relation standpoint with a law firm, one of the developments that we're seeing, and I think we'll see more of in the next five years, is cost effectiveness in the public sector and efficiency. And that means not having layers of lawyers work on things. In my experience as a partner at Squares and Andrews and Dempsey, and an associate there before that for 19 years, the bigger the firm, the more layers of people you have working on things. And our business model is not to do that. I went from, in 1994, charging $240 an hour at Squire Sanders to $150 an hour the next year in our own firm. Now, I didn't do that because I wanted to lose money. I did it because I wanted to eliminate a lot of, a lot of overhead. You know, we're not in Class A space. Pat will tell you in all these personnel hearings, he's done those solo. You know, I think Pat and I together have been in some executive sessions where we were talking about negotiations because he was doing the classified and I was doing OTA, but I don't think on a particular matter you've ever seen two of us. And check with our clients. You know, Upper Arlington and Worthington both have retained a certain amount of work that they traditionally have with record on employment matters, although we do the lion's share. Ask them. We invite you to ask any of our clients about the comparison, and we're very comfortable with that.
Can I just add, I think that the business model I describe of our firm, that our firm has, is very similar to your own business model of providing high-quality, effective legal service for us, and it's education for you, in a cost-effective manner. We have very similar goals and very similar philosophy about how to provide those services. Ours just happens to be legal services, and yours are education. But I think that's why we're such a good fit for you when you ask that question, because you really have those similar goals, and that's something that we're very conscious about. We understand we are working for a public sector, a school district, and that you're responsible to your taxpayers, and we appreciate that, and that's where our business model is, the way it is, and it fits for them.
I guess I have one follow-up question. On your list of school districts that you serve, I noticed Columbus is on there, but they also have their own admin council, so how does that work when a school?
I do most, I do most of their work. I do the labor negotiations for Columbus and have since 1997, and occasionally do other work, but they have two in-house attorneys, Larry Braverman, who used to be at Squire Sanders and was at the AG's office before that, and Wanda Lewis, who used to be an associate of ours and then went to work for them. And they do the lion's share of the work, and then, as you probably read in the paper, Porter Wright and not us are involved with the, a lot of issues about student attendance. Haven't touched that, I promise.
How would the, I guess this is a question for the board, sorry. How was, how would the selections carry out for the different firms, like which ones to send out the requests for?
The shortlist, creating the shortlist. Oh, we can cover that. I don't want to take their time on that.
Take up their time.
We can cover that separately. It's a fair question, though. I don't want to, we've only got a half hour, we've got another firm coming in at 5:00.
Okay. All right, well, here's what we could do now, I guess, is the, we usually do it on fee basis, is what it has in here, rather than retainer, or is it a hybrid?
Yeah, all, all the firms engaged, right, are all on a per-hour basis. We don't have any other.
So, we only pay for the services used?
Yeah. And in general, that's the way the school districts have wanted it, and that's why you see all of us making that decision.
I can likewise attest to their promptness and willingness to work through questions as they come up, very responsive manner. I've always been very confident in the responses I've gotten and very much trusted the opinions that they've given us over, certainly the year when I was president. The only question I had, and it's obviously been answered, I wanted to see if you were requesting to expand your services into other areas, but I gather that's not the case. You stay focused on what you have endured.
Right, yeah. It's within, back when I was at Squire Sanders and Dempsey, and Julie was there, too, as an associate, and I was a partner, they have a bond practice of Breckers, they have all kinds of litigation, they have everything. But we were almost self-sustaining or self-supporting units. The employment relations was separate, and so we don't find we need to have much bond expertise in order to do labor negotiations. And unless you're going to do a high volume of it, you don't want to do it. I mean, I've never asked a client to look for us for bond counsel.
Do you do much state law? You might have already handled this before, conforming to new state laws, education, are you, do we go to you for that?
Well, that's pretty essential, right? So, much of it deals with either student issues or employment relations that, for example, last year, yours was one of the first contract, labor contracts to come up since Hospital 153 had been enacted about the evaluation and rating system for teachers. And so, we had to deal with that in your contract. For example, it stripped out, it limited the use of seniority in reductions and forth, and so we have a limitation on that now in your contract that didn't use stricts.
So, as it deals with labor, but, I mean, like state law with education, like what needs to be implemented, like someone telling us what new laws are coming out, like you guys are going to have to make sure your teachers do this and that? Who do we use for that? Is that?
And Julie. Yes, and we provide advice, for example, like on the third-grade guarantee for reading. A lot of those things, you have expertise in-house, but when there are legal issues that relate to that, they certainly will contact us and will provide that support. And that's probably one of the more recent ones where we've helped provide support to the district on looking at that. We do assist you in policy review. We use a service for that, but on occasion you will ask us to review that, and those are oftentimes those general education-type issues that are impacted by state or federal law, and we'll do a review of that on really just education-type issues of student confidentiality, student records, discrimination of students, and those sorts of issues when we're providing assistance to you.
That's upon request, or you just send out like a newsletter and you're like, hey, these laws just passed, you make sure that you?
That's typically upon request, but we do provide legal updates to the district that. on issues. So most recently, we did that on the state's restraint and seclusion policy that the State Board of Education adopted recently, and we provided a legal update as an issue spotting type document for your administrators to take a look at. And so we do that, provide it as a service. We also do seminars that are free charge to your administrators on kind of those cutting-edge issues, and you had mentioned, Stacy. And we did that recently, kind of across the state, and have those opportunities, too, to provide that as a service to school districts. And those kinds of updates and seminars, we're not charging the district for. We're trying to make sure that your staff have the up-to-date issues that they need to be taking a look at.
So I have one more.
Well, I'd like to do a question.
All right.
Just get one. So there's been a lot written, particularly over the summer and even through the fall, transparency with school districts, and particularly transparency with boards of education. How are you advising your clients to address the transparency concern, and how should we think about that issue?
I think a lot, the answer revolves around the relationship of the client and the lawyer. We shouldn't make decisions for the district. Sometimes we have to, in the trenches of doing things, but the policy, the judgment call of how you want to, how transparent do you want to be? For example, a district could say, unless there's a law absolutely prohibiting disclosure of something, we want to disclose everything, whether it's a public record or not. You know, for example, Spatch last weekend had its summary of kinds of things that courts have held are not public records. So for example, if an employee sends another employee a racial joke, the Supreme Court of Ohio said, that's not a public document, because that doesn't document anything having to do with the activity of the entity, that was an improper use of technology. That doesn't make it a prohibited document from disclosure. I don't know any boards, including yours, that's actually made a policy decision that we want maximum transparency. In other words, we want disclosure of everything that's not expressly made confidential. On the other hand, is, let's not disclose anything that's not technically a public record, that'd be over here. That's one area where frankly, boards don't give their council much guidance. I mean, perhaps they should. But our role as lawyers isn't necessarily to determine that, that's your job. We'll counsel you about what we think, some of the ramifications of those are legally, maybe some of the practical aspects. But that comes back to a board majority deciding what you want to do, in terms of how, and this district makes a lot of use of technology, and you put a lot of things out there on your website, and that reflects an approach to doing business where you want it out there, and your taxpayers want it out there. That's your decision, shouldn't be our decision. Where we come in is, can you put individual, personally identifiable student data out there? Not personally identifiable, individual student data, no.
Okay. We are out of time. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I think Terry's going to take you to your next visit.
So then they go meet with staff.
Yeah, so they're going to, actually doing a bullpen for a while, they're last in the administration. We have Bricker and Eckler.
Hi. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Oh, quick here. Yep. And we are recording, because we record all of our meetings. And so when you speak, just speak at the podium, so that it can pick up your voice.
So, so welcome to the interview process. The way we've run kind of our 30 minutes, so we have 30 minutes, we're trying to stay on time. We'll give you a few moments to maybe give an overview of your proposal, and you affirm, open up the Q and A, and then a time permitting, closing argument.
Closing argument. Closing argument.
So I'm not sure if you're going to speak down the half of the firm, but if you'll start.
Good afternoon, thanks for the opportunity. My name's Matt Stout, I'm a partner in the Public Finance Practice Group at Bricker and Eckler. I have with me today three of my colleagues. They're going to explain more. We have represented the school district as bond council since 1995, and I've taken a lead role in that for the last 12 years. So I'm merely here more as a contact today, to introduce you to my colleagues and let them talk about their practices, and I'll let them do that this time.
Good afternoon, my name's Laura Anthony. I'm the Chair of the Education Practice Group at Bricker and Eckler. We are 19 attorneys who are kind of a boutique within our firm of 148 attorneys. But our 19 attorneys who serve school districts throughout the state of Ohio are not the only ones who assist public school districts. Out of our 150 so attorneys, 51 of us actually devote time to serving public school districts in every area that you can imagine. Anything that schools need, we can do that. We can deal with your labor and employment, your special education issues, your construction issue. Jack is our Chair of our construction practice. Any issues regarding employee benefits or tax issues, we have specialists that work with schools. Intellectual property, business contracts, real estate, energy, both alternative energy and traditional, as well as our public finance group. So we understand, although we're a big firm, we understand how to serve all of the needs that school districts have, and that's why we think that we could provide some very meaningful services to Olentangie. I can entertain any questions about the practice group as a whole, or if you'd like.
Just got a separate question, Pat?
Okay, I'm sure, I was just going to ask, which of the services have we contacted you about primarily in the past? Bond counsel?
Bond counsel, I believe, is currently the extent of our services to Olentangie. But there have been some overlaps, because you can't, you don't have issues that exist in the bubble, and I know that there's been some interaction, both with public finance folks as well as our construction group, because we just don't have one issue. You know, the special education issue can also be a labor issue, it also can be a sick building issue, and it could also be, you know, an employee issue, so we integrate. But my understanding is it's been primarily bond. Others from me?
Anyone else have a good question?
I'll go. In looking at our district, what do you think makes your firm a good fit for Olentangie?
Well, we have been a Ohio-based and primarily Columbus-based law firm, you know, since its inception. We have, I believe, seven of our folks, our Bricker folks are residents of the Olentangie local school district. They are individuals who send their kids to the school district. My colleague, Dane Yashin, I mean, a lot of our attorneys have pre-law careers, like pre-Bricker careers, and he was a Delaware County prosecutor for 10 years. So in terms of understanding Delaware County, and understanding the legal system in Delaware County, as well as, you know, everything that goes on here from a law perspective, a law enforcement perspective, we have that kind of expertise. We also represent almost, you know, every other school district in Delaware County, and so we understand the particular issues that arise in the northwest quadrant of Columbus.
What would those other districts say about you as far as accessibility, how, what that relationship is like, and how you manage conflicts with that relationship?
Conflicts internal with that relationship?
Just in general, board relations, those sorts of things. If a conflict arises, what would they say about your ability to manage and manage that client relationship?
Well, with the size of our practice group, it is our intention that we provide the services immediately that the school district needs. So if I'm, my practice is, I'd say 85% student-related. So if I'm in an IEP meeting in Buckeye Valley, I want to make sure that there's somebody there who can answer the phone and provide meaningful special education advice to another school district, if and when they call. And the reason that we believe that we can deliver that service is because I have four other people who can provide as sophisticated legal advice on my specialized niche practice as I can. And so I think what our clients would say is, we are accessible, and when school districts need a response, we provide that response. We provide it not from attorneys who are learning on the job, or from attorneys who've never seen that issue before. We provide it from attorneys who've practiced throughout the state with years and decades of experience, and we can answer a question quickly and efficiently without having to research it. And if I don't know the answer to the question, I have 18 other people who I can go to, who might have that expertise and who can answer it as quickly as possible, because time is money. And I would encourage you, if you have questions, I would be very happy for you to call the other districts in Delaware County and ask them how responsive and accessible we are.
If I could, I'm sorry, not to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Please move. Particularly germane to your question about how responsive we are. One of the other districts here yesterday had an issue that arose at their school district, and called me, because I'm their primary contact with an issue. So we had a talk about it, and I was explaining some things, and I said, look, I'll take care of it for you, I'll call the sheriff. So I called the sheriff, because I know the sheriff personally, called his direct line, said, here's the issue that's happening in this district, they need someone out there, Russ, can you get someone there right away? They had deputies out there within 45 minutes. Then I was on the road, because I had to go to another district that I was meeting with up in Bowling Green, and the superintendent called and had additional questions. And I said, I can't take care of that, but I will get it taken care of for you, and called back to one of our colleagues, Kimball Carey, who works with us, and just said, Kimball, look, here's the issue, here's what's going on, can you write this letter, call this person back? And before I finished with the other district, the bowling green was driving back, the letter had been sent, had been taken care of, my colleague, Kimball Carey, had spoken with the superintendent, gotten it all resolved. I talked with the superintendent on the way back, it was like, that was so helpful, you know, the sheriff's office was wonderful, they took care of this, here's what we did, we followed this advice. So just, in particular to your question, that happened yesterday, and even though I was out most of the day, we got it all taken care of, it was resolved in favor of the district, how they wanted it, they got the type of attention that they needed, they got the documents they needed, they got assistance from the sheriff's office that they needed, and I wasn't in the office.
Thanks. I have a follow-up question to that, that you brought up. You know, we'll have issues with student issues, we'll have labor issues, we might have board governance issues, so, and I realize that your different attorneys would specialize in those different areas, but is there one point of contact assigned to each school district, and then you, that point of contact decides, oh, I'm going to have so-and-so help you?
Yeah, we don't, we don't really, we don't make our clients try to figure out who's the best person to contact. You know, typically, I would maintain direct lines of communication with special ed directors or people personnel supervisors, so they can have, you know, direct access. But certainly when there's an issue that involves, you know, multiple practice areas or multiple issues, we'll take care of that for you and get you the answer.
Two, I would say two Christmas Eves in a row, when I was visiting family in California, I've talked to a school superintendent back here in Ohio, who called me on my cell phone, you know, all apologetic, but saying, this happened, I need, I'm like, that's fine, let's talk about, you know, here's what you need to do.
No, I got to do them. We heard she does that.
But I did answer a phone call on Christmas Eve from your former treasurer regarding a vote for a board, for board issues.
Yeah.
Can you tell me anything about the, I didn't get a chance to read the case that you had here in Ohio against the unions, or it's for the Board of Education, where they lowered salaries? Was the first win in the state of Ohio?
None of us were personally involved in that, but I know about that issue, and it dealt with whether they could make a unilateral reduction in wages. They were in the course of bargaining, and took the position that there was the statutory right to make a uniform reduction in salaries. It's not something that, at least that we're aware of, that had been exercised in the state, or, you know, gone through any type of challenge. They actually, there was an arbitration that followed that, and the arbitrator held against the Board of Education. And as you may or may not know, there's not an appeal of an arbitrator's decision, but you can file a motion in the Court of Common Pleas to have it overruled on certain specific premises. And so they filed, we then filed a motion to have the arbitrator's decision overthrown by the Court of Common Pleas, and it was, because they felt that the arbitrator had exceeded her authority, and that the board was able to do a uniform reduction, and had not violated the collective bargaining laws or anything else in doing that.
And what about the other case here, the Civil Rights Commission, to reverse its own finding?
That one, I do know personally about, because it was mine. It was up in Bowling Green. We, they had terminated a non-teaching employee because he was leaving work early. He was a second-shift custodial supervisor, and they saw that he was leaving but claiming to have been there the full time. So he was terminated, and went to arbitration, we won the arbitration. On like the last possible day, he filed a complaint with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission claiming that he was terminated because of his disability, and that he was discriminated against because of, that they perceived to have a disability, because he never actually said that he had a disability or what is disability, but that he was perceived to have a disability. Initially, when they investigated it, they issued a finding, a probable cause, that the district had discriminated against him, and that his termination was based on discrimination, and that it was referred to the Attorney General's Office, it was going to trial. We filed a motion to have that reconsidered, which is not something that Civil Rights Commission does very often. And it took a while for them to finally resolve it, but eventually they got back to us and said, you're right, we're overturning our earlier decision, because we had, there's some case law that says, if you have a valid arbitrator's decision that found it was a nondiscriminatory reason, then OCR can't do what they had initially done. And so they reversed themselves, and said, was not discriminatory, and the termination was upheld.
Extensive?
Yes. It was, it was pretty involved.
See, you covered accessibility, I thought was good. Client relationships. You could spend a minute, help me understand how you would onboard yourself, so should this go down a path where you're selected to be more than just bond counsel? How would you establish and get up to speed on our issues and establish that client relationship? And then as a client, what should we expect in terms of quality of that client relationship?
There was a last part I didn't cover.
As a client, what should we expect in terms of equality of that client relationship?
Well, we would expect that if there was any concerns about quality, that you would tell us, because we think quality and value is what we can provide, you know, that's our strongest attribute. We can provide a service to you that allows you to have access to a wide variety of legal services. But in terms of getting up to speed and onboarding with a new district, we certainly have had a lot of experience engaging with new districts and working with administrators to understand the unique issues, both from a student issue to a community relations, to labor and employment issues. One of the things that I've done in several districts, both where there's a new relationship or even a new position, a new special ed director, or a new people personnel director, I've spent time at no charge to the district, basically job shadowing in a day. I call it my special ed director for a day experience, and I learn a tremendous amount. I go to administrative cabinet meetings, I go to board meetings, and I spend time in the district, understanding the unique issues that that school district faces, because every community is different. And although we represent districts from, you know, Lucas County to Washington County and everywhere in between, we understand that the communities are different, and that the needs are different, and that the demands and expectations of each client are different. And so we want to make sure that we customize the services that are best to meet your needs.
I don't know how familiar you are with our district now, but-
My brother lives here.
A little bit of growth and change.
Yes.
And so what do you, a little bit, a little bit. And so we've had to change our focus over the years, from now, building schools, we used to open one every year, to a couple of years. Now, we're trying not to build. So what do you see as the legal challenges facing this district in central Ohio in the next five years, and where should we be focusing on, and why is your firm the best prepared to handle those for us?
Well, and I will invite my colleagues to chime in, because there are different issues. There are building issues, there's, I mean, growth has its own set of issues, both from a student management issue to building management and labor management. But I think the issues that you face as a district that is so highly rated and growing so fast, is that you have tremendous expectations from your community. And meeting those expectations in a way that both meets your fiscal responsibilities as well as your legal responsibilities can be a challenge. And with high-growth districts and high-performing districts, some of those issues can be unique. We have very experience in serving districts your size, in districts with your high rating, and districts with the expectations that your community has for you. So understanding that the demands of the parents, both from a performance standpoint of their students, as well as the demands from your, the taxpayers, to make sure that you are being very fiscally responsible for the money, we understand that. And we understand that providing legal services to you is not just about telling you what the law is, it's about getting your needs met in a creative way, that's legally compliant, and that also satisfies the community's needs. And we also understand that we are a representative of the board, and we are representative to your community. And when we provide legal services, we want to make sure that those are- And when we provide legal services, we want to make sure that those are, you know, they're accurate, they're efficient, and they deliver value. So we are experiencing, I mean, we have a lot of districts that have experienced a lot of growth and influx of new students and people are moving here because of the services that you provide. If you have specific questions on that, I'm happy to answer that. I'm sure Jack is as well because he understands with building, you know, building a lot of buildings, things like that.
I'm Jack Rosati. I'm the chair of our construction practice group. We have nine attorneys who do construction law full-time. Six of those attorneys have engineering backgrounds. Three are registered professional engineers who understand the technical as well as the legal aspects of your construction. Forty-three percent of our construction practice is for K through 12 school districts. I've been doing construction law since 1989. I was a pharmacist for five years before I became a lawyer, so that's why I'm so gray and yet I've only been practicing since 89. It's just not just a matter of building new buildings. As you know, when you have so many buildings under roof, you have maintenance needs. You have upgrades that need to be taken care of. You need HVAC upgrades periodically. You have re-roof projects. And we try to be very proactive in preventing problems. And the number one problem that we see with our school districts, many of whom don't have new construction projects going on, but call us for maintenance and upgrades, is that they don't enter into good, solid contracts. They use standard contract forms or what's provided to them by the vendors without having it vetted. And then if a problem arises, they don't have the tools, the legal tools, they need to protect their own interests. We provide those types of services, contract drafting services, as well as bidding services and helping you get rid of bad bidders, your unqualified people, as a way of protecting you and being proactive in protecting you. Our contract drafting services, we do on a flat fixed fee per project. Bid disputes, 90% of the bid disputes, we are able to resolve without litigation on those cases where we have litigated bid disputes and I've been around long enough, I've done dozens of them. We've had a very good track record of prevailing. So those are some of the things that would be important to you. Defective work sometimes arises five, six years after your building is open. I know we have an architect on the board, so hopefully what I'm saying is ringing true. But, you know, if you have a through-wall flashing defect or a roof flashing defect, sometimes that won't show up for several years. And we come back as late as eight or nine years after a building's been completed and helped the district address those defective design and construction problems and get those things resolved. At any given time, we have more than six roof cases alone in our practice. So our goal and our, our way of implementing that goal is to identify what your needs are, align our fee structure with your needs and the size of your issue. Typically, what we would do is we would meet with your facilities and people for free initially to find out what the program is like, the maintenance program, and find out what we have to offer, what they need from us, and then we try to provide that in a cost-effective manner.
Do you have any turf experts?
Well, as a matter of fact, we have had several turf cases.
Sorry, that was a joke.
Do you have any experience on, let's say, complex transactions involving, frankly, booster groups gifting significant gifts to, whether it's a wrestling room or a turf project or a pool.
Yes, we've done many of those projects. We work with public finance. We have, you know, contract documents and documents in place that we've used for other districts in exactly that scenario.
And actually, we were advising the district last year when the turf issue came to a head. You know, a perfect example, one of the things that we offer is great depth across the board. And I was able to pick up the phone and the treasurer's office, and I think Dave was there. I got Jack on the line and Jack answered a question about construction law in five minutes. You know, we might be a big law firm. Our rates might be a little bit higher than the smaller law firms, but the fact is our depth across the board, we can answer questions because we have experts in real estate. We have experts in energy. We have experts in construction and that really helps us. And I'm the wrestling coach at Upper Huntington and as I told the superintendent, "No new wrestling room for all tangy wood because that's an uncompetitive game."
Well, I would say that, that the vast majority of the time, we can answer a question about construction law off the top of our heads because we just do it full-time. And there's an advantage to that versus having somebody who needs to research it for two or three hours to figure out what the answer is. And we're, we're very confident. We stay up to date on the law. We do newsletters and seminars all the time. So we would, we'd love to have an opportunity to help you at whatever level you need help, whether it's a, you know, a high level or a smaller level. I recently, I serve as a mediator, construction mediator as well. I know most of the construction lawyers in the state. And they asked me to mediate a turf case not too long ago for Ohio Wesleyan. So we understand the different types of turf, what problems can arise. We've had half a dozen turf matters in our, in our office in the last five years.
I can speak to the quality of their construction practice. I, in one way or another, have had workings with Burke or Necker. I'll bet you 15 years anyway. Everything from dealing with contractor-owner issues to reviewing my contracts with a municipal client where they'll send them to you for review. And the Top Gun seminar, the day-long seminar that they typically do annually, is an excellent seminar, seminar about construction and something that Jeff really ought to go to. You doing one this?
We do them every year and have for over a decade.
Yeah. I've gone to almost all of them and found them to be very useful.
I appreciate you saying that. We, we try. We try to get evaluations every year at the end of the seminar, as you know, and we try to make changes based on those evaluations. And I think what's exciting right now is, is, you know, the various construction models that are available to school districts that never have been available before. And we're very well-versed in those, as you know, so.
Okay. Well, that's, that's, that's good. I attended a day-long last week on this whole new thing with design-build, et cetera, and just the legal aspects of it. That's just, that's important information for us to, for us to have as a district.
And we, you know, we've done construction manager at risk and design-build projects in, in the public sector already under construction reform. We've had several of them already that are underway. Some of them have been completed. They were smaller projects. But we've done design-build and CM at-risk projects in the private sector up to $320 million. So we go from $200,000 projects to $320 million projects. We can, but of course, we have to align our fees to the size of the project.
No, they, they got it.
Wait, do I have any questions?
I have two, actually. One, very, very quick, but I've worked with Matt, obviously, but from a school law standpoint, have you thought about if we chose you, who would be our go-to person?
We would provide you with the discretion to choose who you'd like to interact with. We want to make sure that the client's needs are best met. And if I was that person, I, you know, I'd be happy to do that, certainly Dane is. We have relationships with every, you know, district around here and we like for the district to feel comfortable in who they select. So it's certainly not something that's set in stone, although I am the chair of the practice group, that doesn't mean that you might not have a better relationship with somebody else on our team. And I want to make sure that I did answer your question in terms of what do I see as projecting the future as top, you know, issues? I would say it's not unique to all tangy, but third grade reading guarantee is going to create a whole shift in the way that you staff and deal with reading intervention as well as the whole issue coming down the pipe with healthcare reform and your employee benefits. And both of those things, we have employee benefits specialists in, with, who work with school districts and we understand the tax implications that go over collective bargaining and things like that. So that, these are the two things that we are seeing in teacher evaluation. Those are the three things coming down the pipe that is going to dramatically change the way schools do business.
If I could piggyback on what Laura said, Dr. Lucas, on that question, I haven't had a chance to tell you this yet because I've been in the office, but I got a phone call yesterday from one of our clients that I don't regularly work with. In fact, I've never worked with them, but they have a new HR director that I have worked with in years past. And she called and said, you know, "Nothing against, I know this person works with us and this person, but I'm comfortable with you. What do we have to do, you know, to make it right?" And I said, "It's done. You work with whomever you want to be comfortable with because we don't want to lose a client because they say, 'No, you can't call the person you're comfortable with. You need to deal with this person because they're the person that we said is in charge.'"
But I will tell you, if you call Dane about a special ed issue, he's going to say, "I'm not answering that."
I understand that completely.
So, subject to that limitation.
We always do bring those people in when they have, because I'm not gonna say, "Oh, let me see what..." I was like, "No, you wanna talk about special ed? I'm gonna get Laura involved or someone else."
But there are four other people, so if you don't like me, we can find you somebody that you relate well to.
Quickly, the uniqueness of the relationship with a school district. You work day-to-day with administrators. You, you represent the board.
Of course.
What happens, how, give me an example of how you would handle conflicting views?
Conflicting views on the board?
From, from administrator standpoint, let's say we're in negotiations and administrators are pushing for one thing, knowing that the board's somewhere else. How do you work with that?
We understand that our ethical obligation is to represent the board as a whole and not any particular administrator. We would be violating our own code of ethics if we were to do anything but that. But that's the reality, that that happens. And so we understand that it's both, we have a legal obligation to the Board of Education and we have a practical obligation to make sure that we can get those issues resolved from a practical standpoint. And that is not an unusual thing, you know, circumstance that you just raised.
Good. Thank you.
Quick question from the cost efficiency standpoint, you know, we're talking about negotiations, we wanna work with that. Sometimes there's smaller issues where maybe the best isn't, you know, we don't want that hourly rate for these types of questions. How do you determine when maybe if this is an issue that maybe somebody else should handle at a lower rate?
Well, I will tell you that we work with school districts. Many of our district clients say we want Burke or Necker from A to Z. We want every single legal need that we have to be served by Burke or Necker because we understand that the student, the disabled student has a chemical sensitivity and the teacher's not very sensitive to that. That's a special ed issue. That's a labor and employment issue. That's a sick building issue. So we can handle all of those things. But some districts say we, rate structure, we're gonna devote our specialized services and we may pay premium rates to certain things and we do that. And we recognize that there are some districts that choose to go with one firm for certain things and choose us because of the specialized services that we provide. And we have no hesitation in providing just as good of a service to a school district that only wants to use us for specialized services versus a district that uses us, like I said, from soup to nuts. So how we structure those things, there are certain things that are flat fee-based, like some of the things that Jack talked about, some of the things that Matt does for the school district, and there are some things that are hourly rates. We also have proposed, and your district is amongst one of the districts that are eligible for this, group legal services through the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. And we understand and are mindful of the need to provide cost-effective legal services. And that's both from a discounted rate through, for ESCO members for a limited number of hours, as well as what we call our Module Two program that allows districts that have similar needs to collaborate and share in the cost of those needs. For example, policy review or other things that every district needs. We understand that we can get some cost savings for districts by, by those individuals collaborating and that's all through your ESC.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I believe Terry will take you to your next stop.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, last. Welcome, welcome. You can come take a seat in front of the hall if you choose, if you like. Okay, we are recording the meeting both audio and visual. So if you were gonna speak, if you could please get to the podium to the microphone, that would be helpful. The way we're structuring the 30 minutes is we give you an opportunity to highlight your proposal from your firm and then we'll go into questions from there. And then, time permitting, we'll have a closing statement. So with that, if you would mind, I'm not sure if you're gonna speak first, but spend a few minutes highlighting your proposal, highlighting your firm, that would be terrific.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Our firm has been practicing school law since the 1960s. So, and we've been doing it continuously. We've represented school districts all over the state of Ohio. I don't know that anyone's ever stopped to count how many of the individual school districts we've represented, but I would guess the large majority of them. We believe that we have attorneys that are experienced and knowledgeable and responsive to clients, whatever their needs may be. We try to do things efficiently. We also believe that there's an educational component, that we need to educate your, your employees and your staff so that maybe they don't need to call attorneys all the time. We want to try and provide the best legal analysis that we can for you. And we have 10 attorneys. I, we were talking the other day, although Mr. Jenkins here doesn't probably, probably does less school law work than anybody, but if you have an estate problem, he'll help you out. But we all do school law in one fashion or another. And we also have business lawyers, so they have both sides of it. You are running a business and it's a large business, so that perspective, we think, also Both Nikki and I and two other attorneys, primarily that's what our practice is, representing school districts. We do anything from labor relations to contract review to discipline, student discipline, teacher discipline. We also serve as counsel for the Ohio School Plan, so we also defend school districts in court, which is an interesting perspective that some attorneys don't have. You know, we understand what it means when you get sued and you're going to the mat on a legal issue because it's expensive, it's time-consuming, and there ought to be ways to avoid that. We think our rates are fairly competitive and we also make it a point of being responsive. We always try to get back with clients that same day, the next day, if, if, in certain rare occasions. And we try to give you, we try to answer questions. We're not interested in providing you with a 15-page letter with legal citations of authority and case law. We prefer to give you a three or four-page letter which analyzes the question so that you understand it and understands our reasoning in getting to the answer. We believe that's the best service we can give to you. I guess that's all I have to say in introductory remarks.
Okay, perfect.
So, one more turn to questions?
Yeah. I, I just want to say that being on the Delaware area Career Center board, I've had to work with Nicole. And it's always scary to get a call from your attorney when you're not, when you're not expecting it. But we had one recently and let me tell you, she was able to answer my questions, you know, I think before she even made the call, she had everything researched and knew what we should be doing next. And so we've had a lot of unique cases that have come before the Career Center and none that I have seen here. And Nicole has handled them wonderfully and positively for the Career Center, I will say. So I can speak highly of that relationship there. But the one question that I have for you is that what strengths do you bring to our school district, just because you would come and be replacing somebody? So what strengths would you be bringing?
Well, again, I think I touched on a few of those issues. Efficiency, responsiveness, knowledge, and experience. There are very few things we haven't handled in one fashion or another over the years. And I agree with you, Nikki's a very fine attorney. I couldn't live without her. I won't judge my own qualities, but in terms of what we can bring to you, I think, you know, I, I think we can meet your needs in an efficient manner, in a financially reasonable manner, and try to get you the answer that your administrators need. And to educate them so maybe they don't have to call us next time and ask that question. They'll know how to do a due process hearing for a disciplined matter with a student for what is or is not a public record. You know, for someone who doesn't deal with that every day, it can be a very tricky issue and the consequences of, of giving the wrong answer can be punitive in nature. So I guess, I guess that's how it is.
I wanna thank you, thank you for your call in. I think the nice part about, you know, dealing with those experiences at the Career Center, you know, you don't have to have experienced the exact situation everywhere, but it's that experience and what approach. And I think that's something that we do have, is the experience of handling very difficult situations and knowing the approach, having a recommendation on the approach that can be taken to solve the problem. And I think that that's something that, I think that's a strength that we would have, while if we were to come in, we don't know all the nuances here at this point in time. We don't know all of your employees, but we certainly have the experience to help your board and your staff deal with very difficult issues if those issues should arise.
One of the, one of the things that, obviously, some of you know about Olentangie, is we're all about growth. We've changed a little bit, I don't know how many students were here when you were on the board, but what do you, what do you see as the, you know, for the next five years? Whereas we used to focus on building new buildings and land and those things, what do you see as the focus upcoming, based on your work with other districts and knowing what you know about our district, that we will need to focus on? And how does your firm specifically able to address those concerns that you see trends, legal trends coming?
Well, I think probably the cutting edge of education now, for districts and for the lawyers, is the accountability piece. We've got the teacher evaluation system that's going into place now. No one knows really how that's gonna turn out. I predict that, maybe I'll be wrong, but I predict that when you get down to trying to apply those rules, which were pretty hastily enacted, that there will be issues, there'll be grievances, there'll be fights about it. And everybody's trying to hold school districts and their employees accountable for results. So, I think that's where you're gonna face the biggest pressure and the biggest change in the way perhaps you've operated in the past. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think tying into the accountability piece, it's also accountability to parents. And in terms of litigation, at least, that's something we see in both litigation and special ed. When a parent has a problem, they want responsiveness, they want their issue. While you may have many issues, they have a single issue that's very critically important to them, and they want a solution. So, that's where we, another kind of cutting-edge thing, whether it's hazing and bullying, litigation, or civil rights litigation, we do see that seeming to increase in terms of parents filing lawsuits on behalf of their kids. So, one of the goals would be to help you avoid being a defendant in a lawsuit.
Do you have any recent cases you could cite from civil rights or any of those that's been hot right now in discrimination?
Sure, we have some gender orientation issues, that's a really hot issue right now. And that's in a lot of rural areas, that maybe their staff haven't been as educated in terms of what rights students have in the school setting. And unfortunately, we weren't there to help those folks prevent those situations from occurring, and...
Wait. I know that you've worked with us in the past with some real estate issues, I didn't know that there's been a history of other areas you've worked with Olentangie?
Yeah, we did a lot of your work, again, when you were much smaller, everything was in this complex. So that tells you how long ago that was, probably eighties, nineties maybe, when you were on the board? I was on the board, I think ninety-seven to two thousand. So we did, some of the labor relations work, discipline work, just advising the administration on what they could and couldn't do. You know, sometimes the best advice you can give to a client is to tell them they can't do it. It saves a lot of trouble later on. But we've done quite a bit of real estate work for you over the years. A little bit of construction contracts early on, but there was a change in the administration at one point, and they, the board determined to use someone else. It's probably been twenty years, fifteen to twenty years, since we did much work here other than, we did some, a few special education cases since we did most of the general legal work for the district.
So, education law is fairly dynamic, it changes frequently. How do you, as a firm, keep current on the evolving kind of legal environment within the education system?
We, well, obviously, you have to keep track of what's going on in the legislature. They're changing things two or three times a year. We give seminars, we present in-service presentations to clients. That's always useful in educating ourselves about particular areas of the law that we might not be as familiar with. We try to keep up on all the publications from OSBA, BASA, and all the others to stay on top of things. Then we talk with attorneys. The school law, I'd say not only is dynamic, education law is also, there's almost a small group of attorneys who do it. And we talk to each other a lot, and we, you know, we run problems past each other, we ask them, how's this going? We also know the attorneys representing the unions, and we'll talk about problems. What's this causing? What's this statutory change causing? And then just doing it day in and day out, I think you have to keep on top of it. It's surprising to me, sometimes you find in the budget bill, for example. And if you've ever had to read a two-thousand-page bill to try to ferret out the education stuff, and it, it's a great, it's a great sleep aid, is what it is. But I think that's primarily how we try to keep on top of things. And there are seminars we go to, I love to put on my various groups.
Mr. Lucas, the uniqueness of the relationship between legal counsel and a school system. You work daily with administrators, and you represent the board.
Correct.
How do you handle those situations and times when the views of a specific item, let's say negotiations, would be different between administration and the board?
Well, if it's, if it's a situation where there's a clear conflict in views, I think we, as legal counsel, need to know what it is the board wants us to do. I mean, that is our client, the administration is not our client, the Board of Education is our client. And sometimes, maybe not in negotiations, but we, I've had to inform an administrator that, look, you know, we don't represent you, you need to consult your own counsel about this, or you need to talk to your professional association, because I'm not gonna be able to help you. And there have been an occasion where we just had to send a letter saying that. I have a funny story, but I'm not gonna tell it because it'll take up too much time. But I once, we were firing an administrator, and I went in, and he thought I was representing him, because I was the board's attorney, he was the employee of the board, so therefore I was his attorney, and I had to explain to him, ah, that's not how it works.
That probably didn't end up very well.
No, it did not, it did not.
Another follow-up question. If we went with your firm, and who would we work with on a daily basis?
Well, it would probably be Nikki and I, we were the two senior education attorneys. We would probably determine if a particular matter came in that we didn't have time to handle, that we would try to get it to the person in our firm who was most experienced or best able to do that. So, you know, you wouldn't have ten attorneys calling you up. It would probably be Nikki or I, or we would direct somebody. Mr. Lucas said that he wanted to hear from us, and he's aware you're gonna call, you call. But generally, I think you would hear from Nikki or I.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one more. When you go into contract negotiations, whether it's with the teachers' union, or maybe the support union, custodial bus drivers, how, what, how is that, that process work between the board and then how you go in and negotiate? Do you prefer to have one representation with you, not about?
I, yeah, I have done it both ways. I don't know that I have a particular feeling one way or another. There are some, and some, it depends on the district, too. There are times when you've been in negotiations and you find that there's a, there's a very opinionated or strong board member, or maybe even a supporter of some of the issues of the association, and the union's just talking to them. They're not talking to anybody else sitting there. So sometimes it's a good idea not to have bargaining members at the table. But some, some districts, that's the way they've always done it, and I have no problem with that, because, you know, as I said earlier, we represent the board. So, I'm not, I can't reach an agreement if the board's gonna turn it down. You have to buy into whatever we're doing, you have to buy into whatever we're agreeing to. So, even if you're not sitting at the table, because I don't know if you've ever done that, but it's like watching paint dry most times. I've never seen a process that takes you so long to get to an end, as some negotiations are.
You're not representing a strong side, are you?
No, we are not. So, you know, but I, you know, it's your contract, so, you know, I never, and I, I actually started working with a client last year because the person who was bargaining that contract agreed to things that the board wouldn't agree to. So they even had a tentative agreement, the board rejected it. So, to me, that would be a wrong thing to do. I have to have a sense of where you're at and what you wanna do, and then with whoever's on the team, usually the administration and treasurer, we have to have a sense of what needs to be done. And there's give and take, and, you know, it's kind of a, you can't, even if there's like one sentence you don't like, well, to get the whole package, you may have to agree to that one sentence. That's the nature of the beast, I guess. I don't know if I get to your question or not. Anything to add?
Does you know other questions? You've got a moment if you want anything else to add, or we can conclude?
Will you dare for Wayne, you know? They just bring you, 'cause you're, you know? And Wayne, with your full disclosure, introduce yourself and your...
Yeah, Wayne Jenkins. I'm with the firm, I don't practice school law, I actually, but if anyone needs a will or a trust, I can help you out. I do wanna at least note, I think one of the unique things that our firm does bring is that, you know, I am a former board member, I have sat in those chairs, so I know a little bit about the responsibility that that carries and what the public expects of the board, and the kind of questions you'll get. So, I hope that's helpful. I've also worked with the city of Powell, I chaired their planning and zoning for four years, so that was also a lot of fun. So, you know, the contacts and relationships and experience that I have, I'm still a very active participant in school and Powell affairs. I had two special daughters who went through, one who was also a special needs daughter, but they all got K through twelve educations in the Olentangie School District, and I'm very happy with the way it went, I'm a big fan. So, but the experiences that I've had being on the board and the relationships I have and have kept with the administration and the schools and the principals, in some cases, some people in Powell and other things like that, to the extent that knowledge, experience can be brought to bear in a favorable manner for Olentangie District, I am happy to do so, 'cause as I said, I'm a big supporter.
I would say one more thing, if I might, I know you're running out of time. We enjoy doing what we're doing, we work ten attorneys, so we see each other every day. We go to lunch if everybody's in the office, we enjoy what we're doing. We don't have people leaving our office because they're unhappy with how we practice law or what we do. They may move out of state, or they may wanna raise a family, although Nikki has three young children, except twins, they'll tell you that we, you could even accommodate that, and she's a very good attorney and a good mother. But I think that kind of sets us apart. We want to help our clients, and we want to help them get the right answer as efficiently as they can. If we can do that for you, then we assume we've done what we need to do.
Perfect, cool, thank you very much for coming, really appreciate it.
No, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, presentations are complete?
Did you wanna answer Adam's question?
Yeah, so Adam, keep me, you know, we don't, today, we don't use one firm, so we use, actually, all, two of the three, right? We use Bricker and Elliott for bond counsel? Bricker?
Eckler.
Eckler, sorry, for bond counsel, and some construction stuff we brought in.
Yeah.
Just sounds like it.
Special ed and labor negotiations are Scott, Greg Scott's. And there's no, I guess as a board, we've gotta decide, do you wanna go to consolidation services, the one provider for all services, or do we remain comfortable using different firms for different services?
And who does, who looks over our building contracts, is that...
Well, that's been Mike Tirillo.
Right.
Oh, a different one?
Now, yeah.
He's not sure the firm anymore.
He's not with the same firm, I don't know the name, he just switched firms in January, but he has done much of our construction. Jeff Rich.
Yeah.
Over in Dublin, who does our board of, or real estate reviews. Any others we have out there?
We use...
Ice Miller.
Well, he, that's where Mike Tirillo was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We used another firm to do the healthcare consortium. To get out of that, we used another firm, because I had to go down to their offices, and they're on, they're by Nation Line. Lips and... And I forget their name, but they, I guess they specialized in, in that, that was a very specialized contract and situation that we were dealing with to get out of the healthcare consortium.
So, to be clear, we're not, even if we went with one firm, it's not exclusive arrangement. Should we ever have a situation where we wanted to bring in?
That's right.
A unique individual like Mike Tirillo? We always have that flexibility, depending upon the situation and the need to bring in whoever.
Yeah, and since they're not on retainer, you're only paying for the services used.
Right. Mike's done it for, Mike's done it for a long time, I know that.
To answer the process question, we put out an RFQ, we got how many?
Eight.
Eight in, and it was reviewed.
I mean, how is, is it like a email, is it on a website, a request?
An RFQ?
You just send it out?
Probably, we did the process to get...
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, do we have letters, do we send out beckers?
Becky sent those out.
An RFQ to, to multiple law firms in the city that would specialize in, and would have it in education practice.
A RFQ would have had a minimum qualification section, so you had to at least have education practice, minimum amount of experience, and... A fee for both, you'll see, based upon the answers, they are, he was very structured on minimum requirements, experience.
Oh yeah, I mean, I see, like, that some of them don't even wanna do construction stuff. The first, I got that, had Becky select them, to send out the request for, for people to answer. You know, like, when you do jobs, you know, you put on Career Builder, whatever it is, like Alan said, how did she take them out?
She was just a targeted, usually request for proposals, just like if you're doing it for advertising, or attorneys, or doctors, you have a select group of people, you may say, I'll send it to every law firm in Central Ohio, but that's usually a waste. You, you do a... do a cut before you even go and saying, here's ones that we know will be able to answer the RFQ and not waste their.
And I was gonna say, a rational.
We know who works with schools, so I mean, it's, it's a select group.
And, and we had, of the eight, I think we had four outside, outside of central Ohio. And on top of that, I probably had another three phone calls, the firms that were, you know, going to put a proposal together, but they weren't in central Ohio. So they asked some questions about, you know, who we currently have and, and how big the district is and how, what, what kind of money we spend per month on legal firms, but they, they never sent a proposal, so.
Does this happen like every couple of years, or just?
We've never done this since I was on the school board. And it is something as a business practice, like with any vendor, like if you're buying paper, you always put your paper out to bid. It's something that should be done on, you know, every five years or whatever.
Every three to five, five, five maximum.
Just to test the waters and to make sure that you are getting the best representation that's there.
Yeah, because people could change within the firm. I mean, I think the three to five concrete is a good benchmark.
So it's process wise, so as we've interviewed the three firms, a group of administrators, which I'm not sure who.
Linda Gale, Mark Chrisandres, who is representing our.
The most likely consumer of this.
Yeah.
Jeff Gordon's over there from the construction standpoint. Every representative from central office that would have some dealings with the attorneys.
List the process going forward.
Yeah, so they're gonna come up with a recommendation based upon their views that we will consider. I mean, my sense is we can deliberate now, because we're still in public session, and get a sense of where we are, and then based upon the additional input of the administration group, or revisit it at our next meeting, make a recommendation upon this. So sort of deliberation, I give my reaction, like everyone can then kind of, to exactly ready to share, share. If I had to rank the three, I'd go with Bricker, Scott, and then Means as the three. And frankly, I just like, I thought, you know, chemistry was good with Bricker. I like the breadth of the firm, or you can do one stop shop, frankly, I'd even recommend just using them up and down, just to get the breadth spectrum. My only pause on Bricker is I'd like to understand what I'm signing up for fee wise. It's about thirty bucks an hour north of what we're used to paying. And so if I, if we got off as possible, a good analysis is, if I just took two thousand fiscal twelve, how many hours did we bury and apply their rates to those hours? How much more would we be paying? To get a sense of, you know, if, if, if you shift, what that shift might look like. Because I could contact, you know, put some color around that, renovation as well. I do think Scott does have the institutional memory, which I think can be very helpful. But I, you know, I don't think that, my mind, chemistry, for me, chemistry's not the same there as the others. And I just, I like the small firm part of it in the last one. Just didn't get the same dynamic feel out of that firm.
To me, it's, it's between Bricker and Scott, but it's a real deep conversation on what's important, because to me, it is history versus new, small versus big, focus versus broad, and what matters most to the, us as a district. And, I mean, I don't want to say it's David and Goliath, but it is the idea of what's more important to us, that institutional knowledge, which I think you can't buy, versus, okay, we've been doing this for this from fifteen years, what's, you know, what else is out there that we just don't even know about from a new perspective? And, and I can't say that I, I could decide between the two of them right now, because it is, but I think that's the conversation we should have, not necessarily between, because I, I, from a chemistry standpoint, have had a much better feeling with Scott, because I, I like Julie. I know that they know us. I know that they know the teachers. I, I have that chemistry feeling of they are going to be there if I call them on Christmas Eve, where I, I, I thought that they were very dynamic, the other group was very dynamic, but it wasn't the same kind of connection. It was more of a, a sales pitch to me. I'm not saying that's bad, but, so if I based it just on chemistry, I'd say Scott. But, but I have to think about it, and I think we should be thinking about it, is we're making a fundamental decision on future direction based on two very different firms and what they're able to do for us. So what's more important to us in that discussion? And, and I'm not saying I have the answer to that, and it may be different for each of us, but we should be able to focus as a district. What does the district need going forward? Do they need someone that can do the full breadth in putting in one, everything with one firm? Is that important to the district? So tho- those are the kind of questions I'd love to hear what you guys think about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just be very specific on the chemistry issue. For me, I like Pat Schmidt.
Yeah.
I like Julie.
Yeah.
Great job. I'm a fan of Scott.
Yep.
That's it.
Oh, I, since I've worked with Nicole and the others at this last firm, and worked with all of them, and Scott's firm in Ohio, I, and I walk by Bricker's building every day, but I could honestly say I could work with any of these groups. So I, and I, I, I really like having that historical knowledge, only because when we're working with the state legislature, if you don't have that, a lot of times you bang your head against the wall and you lose a lot of time, and time is money if you are continually having to re-educate people on the culture and the past issues of your district. But I, I like that, I like to have a menu. I like to say, oh, they specialize in construction law, and so they're, they're the big guns there. That's who we need to go with. So I would, I would still be very open to using specific law firms for specific needs. And I think that would give us the best bang for our buck, because on construction matters, I want the best people out there. Because I don't want to have to come back and, you know, go after a contractor later or contractors going after us.
But do you think Bricker gives us that by having all those in-house? I mean, what are your thoughts? Saying, yeah, I want a menu, is that menu covered in Bricker? Is there a cost or a downside to having it all with one firm? What do you think?
I think, yeah, I think there is a downside with parking everything at one firm, only because for Bricker, it's cost, and because you might work better with somebody else at another firm. So I don't want to be married to just one firm. And truth be told, I mean, somebody else could be sitting in that seat, you know, next year. So it's got to be the best fit for the entire district. And maybe out of the administrators, they'll say, oh my gosh, for special ed, we've got to stay here. We've got to go somewhere else. You know, so I, I still want to be open to what their recommendation is, but right now, I still like that menu that I can pick. You guys are the ones for this issue. You guys are the ones for this issue. I think it keeps, keeps pretty honest too, you know?
So are we making a decision on a contract? I'm, I'm sorry that I'm a confused.
Yeah, that should.
It's not, it's not a contract or?
This should be a qualifications-based discussion, right? And then you negotiate your fees after you're made.
Right, but I'm saying the decision that we have to come out after this deliberation is not, we're going to go with this one firm.
No.
We're not renewing anyone's contract. We're not deciding to sign a contract. We're just seeing what's out there from a law firm perspective, and at the end, we can say we like it the way it is, being able to hire whoever we want.
Correct.
I mean, I would use any of the firms though. I mean, they're all pretty much.
Yes, you could.
Industry's fee basis.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I like the idea of being able to use a couple of firms, the, the Bricker, like the, that can cite real cases, where they've actually done something in the state of Ohio, like the civil rights thing, and then the woman with the board and the union. And, but they're expensive, but I like that. They were the only ones that, I thought that cited real cases. Of course, I didn't ask the first firm, but they're pretty proud about it.
Most of their cases are ours. I've done a few.
So like, and even it's ten after six, we get to six thirty.
Let me, let me get a couple of comments in here. Of the three firms, and, and what gives me some weight for Means is your comment about Nikki. Did I get the name right?
Yeah, Nikki.
Yeah, Nikki. So that, that has weight for me. But I feel more comfortable with Scott and if, if I have to rank, I'm going to feel more comfortable with Scott and with Bricker. And I almost consider it a tie, and what I mean by tie is the different areas. Bricker, again, I've had a lot of workings with them over the years. They're, they're basically unmatched in the construction side, and I'm extremely confident with them looking at contracts. And I'm just something to think about. But I could even see talking to them and asking them to do an evaluation of the contract on the turf when that comes to fruition, because I'd like them to bring to bear what they've seen. You mentioned six cases. One's in mediation, and I'd like him to bring to bear, this is what we've seen can go wrong. I really liked the woman's response about, or maybe it was, I think it was the man, whoever, from Bricker, about the question about who do you work for, when she talked about the ethical side. I thought, oh, excellent way to put that. Means did it, but I thought theirs was more effective. I, I, clearly, I think you, you, you pull from each of the firms what they're going to bring to us. I have a lot of weight on Scott's institutional knowledge of the district. That weighs heavily with me. And I understand where you're coming from and the individuals. Julie, a little bit of conversation, but a lot of conversation with Scott and Pat, and both of the responses. I do, I do like Pat a lot.
Who, who did you deal with in the policy? Because there were a couple of times we had to have, one of their.
That was Julie, Julia, Julie.
I thought it was Julia. Was it Julia Bauer?
Yes, yes. If I said Julie, I should say Julia.
Because it was Julie that presented them, especially, and then Julia.
Yes.
Did the policy.
Ah, you're right.
Is correct.
She said that.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is right.
Yeah.
Yes. Because Julia is the person that comes to our administrative meetings, the ring service, Julia Bauer.
They do a lot of those kind of things, coming to speak and things, and I, I know they're not billing it for, for us for that, the diversity task force.
Oh, yeah.
And those sorts of things. And I appreciate that level of, I live in the district, I'm going to come in and talk about things.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm, to Dave's point, it, it, it's a tie in that I, I liked both of them a lot, but I, I'm, I think we're all of the same opinion that there's different strengths. And I'd, I'd love for them to look at the turf issue. I'd, I'd love us to give them more business, but I feel really confident with, with the labor relations side staying right where it is.
Pat has always been very thorough with his thoughts.
I'm a huge Pat and Julie fan, and I have similar concerns with. And, and I think we could say that. I mean, they, they work.
Well, you're.
And say, yeah, but we want to.
Well, I tell you.
I mean, they're not going to walk away and go, well, then you can't work with us if you don't work with.
Not that I can say that this is accurate, but I did notice in Casino, you had Pat and Julie in attendance, and I thought, and they made a point of coming up and saying hi and talking to you a lot, and I actually thought there was a little message there. You know what I mean?
I think that was clear.
This is good input. We'll get the input from the administration group, and then we'll probably talk about it again in April and see where we go. So I appreciate.
How will that information be shared?
I assume through a superintendent's.
Well, we can make it either through the board, probably it'd be more likely to come from the board president's.
Yeah, I think so.
Because it is a board legal counsel.
That's right.
But, so get that together.
We'll give our input.
Give it to me, and I'll put it in the presentation.
Yeah.
We turned on the mics. It's like reverberating.
Yeah, it is.
You hear that the whole time.
Do we have to adjourn?
Yeah, we go to adjourn, go grab some heat, and then come back for six thirty. So given that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feasal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, thank you.
Call call, please. Ms. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Feasal?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here. We'll move to Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some changes, we have some changes to the agenda.
Yes. You have, you have one addendum that is listed for you. It would go into classified staff, specific human resource item, and this would be item B three. B three. We already, as you see there, have a resignation for Elaine Johnson, and we're going to add one classified resignation, as listed to be Rhonda Mason, Olentangie Orange High School Custodian, second shift, effective March fourteenth.
And no other changes to the agenda?
I do believe, but I do have Adam's separate, but I'll just save that for.
As we go through.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, so could I then get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Call the, uh, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Feasal?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, now we have a presentation. Jennifer Bickley, if I say that correctly, from my favorite middle school, Berkshire Middle School. Please come up. It's titled, Student Participates in the Holocaust Museum Project.
Thank you for the invitation. I have Jack Campbell, Jay Miller, Adip Rivaldi, and Abby Stokel, and they are excited to share with you a little bit about our Holocaust unit of study that we did. So basically, it was an integrated theme unit. We got to tie in our research, our filmmaking, our film study, got to tie in some of our literature and text standards, and they're going to tell you a little bit about what we did that led to this involvement in a butterfly project with the Holocaust Museum of Houston.
As many as one and a half million children, including over a million Jewish children, were killed during the Holocaust. The Nazis did not spare any Jews, gypsies, mentally handicapped Polish children, or other undesirables, as the Germans and their collaborators referred to them. Children were killed without hesitation because of their parents' beliefs out of retaliation, as a precautionary measure, and sometimes sadly, just for fun. Babies and toddlers had little chance for survival. Many Jewish and other undesirable children were immediately killed after birth. Babies and toddlers who were sent to concentration and death camps usually met their faith, their fate, immediately upon arrival in gas chambers or killing centers. Chil- children ages thirteen to eighteen were a little more likely to at least have a chance of survival, as they were able to be forced to work at labor camps or used as the subject of torturous metal, medical experiments performed by the Nazis. In the ghettos, Jewish children died from starvation and exposure, as well as lack of adequate clothing and shelter. The German authorities were indifferent to this mass death, because they considered most of the younger ghetto children to be unproductive and, in their words, useless eaters. One of the largest and most, one of the largest and probably most well-known concentration and death camps from the Holocaust is Auschwitz-Birkenau. When children arrived at Auschwitz, the greater numbers of them were sent to the killing centers without delay. Sadly, thousands of children were shot at the rim of mass graves. Many Jewish prisoners at the concentration and death camps were forced to kill their own people, including children, just to stay alive for another day. In the end, one and a half million lives were lost. Amongst this hatred and unbelievable disregard for races, cultures, and particular groups of people, there are some stories of courage, selflessness, immense love that have come out of the Holocaust. Even when the Nazis demanded that he release the children he was responsible for, Janis Korgzak, director of an orphanage in the Warsaw Gavrievsky refused to abandon the children under his care when they were selected for deportation. He accompanied them on the transport to the Drebilka Killing Center and into the gas chambers, sharing their fate. Between nineteen thirty-eight and nineteen forty, the Kinder Transport, Children's Transport, was the informal name of a rescue effort which brought thousands of refugee Jew, Jewish children without their parents to safety in Great Britain from Nazi Germany and Germany, German occupied territories. Some non-Jews hid Jewish children, and sometimes in ca- in the case of Anne Frank, hid other family members as well in France, almost, in France, almost the entire Protestant population of the Le Chambon Serlidon, as well as many Catholic priests, nuns, and lay Catholics hid Jewish children in their town from nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-four. In Italy and Belgium, many children survived and hid.
One story that really touched us as a class was the story of the ghetto of terrorism, also known as the Reichstag. It was located in the hills of Prague, and it was an unusual concentration camp in that it was created to cover up the Nazi genocide of the Jews. Built as the first gift to the Jews, this model ghetto was the site of a Red Cross inspection visit in nineteen forty-four and of a propaganda film produced by the Nazis. Some elderly, some elderly Jews even paid to enter its protective ghetto walls. With its high proportions of.
With its high proportions of artists and intellects, culture flourished in the ghetto alongside starvation, disease, and constant dread of the continuous transport to the death camps of the East. Every one of its, every one of its inhabitants was, in effect, sentenced to die. A total of 15,000 Jews under the age of 15 passed through the terrorism concentration camp between the years of 1942 and 1944. Less than 100 survived. The gifted individuals placed at terrorism helped the children pass time and may, for a moment, forget about what life is like. They taught them art and music, as well as how to write poetry, read, and other gifts that they could share without needing additional resources. In the poems and pictures created by the young inmates of terrorism, we learned about the sadness and misery of these displaced children, that these displaced children faced, as well as the hopes that so many of them held on to. The artwork and poetry are all that these children have left behind. Some of the children signed their names to their artwork and writings, making it possible to find out a few facts about them. The year in place of their birth, the date of their transports to terrorism and to Auschwitz, and the date of their death. For most of them, that last date was 1944, a year before the war ended. We were able to read and study the many, many of their poems, drawings, and writings to get a better understanding of their experiences. The children's interpretations and experiences have captured, have been captured in a book called, "I Never Saw Another Butterfly." The book was named after a poem written by Pavel Friedman entitled by the same name.
"I Never Saw Another Butterfly." For seven weeks, I've lived in here, pinned up inside this ghetto, but I have found what I love here, with dandelions call to me and the white chostnut branches in the court. Only I never saw another butterfly. That butterfly was the last one. Butterflies don't live in here, in the ghetto. For us, the children's work was a sad and sometimes a scary reminder of what no child should ever have to experience, the genocide of a human and individual face. Because of this, when Mrs. Bickley presented us with the opportunity to craft our own, our own butterflies to represent the 1.5 million children who perished in the Holocaust, we jumped at the opportunity to create butterflies to be on display at the Holocaust Museum of Houston in Texas as a tribute to the many, way too many lives lost.
And we have a little video that a couple of our other students made, showing our butterflies and a couple of little interviews with the kids that they made.
Something that stood out to me in the Holocaust was what happened to children with mental disabilities. In our Holocaust study, I always remember that the brave people who fought to free Jewish people.
What bothered me the most was how Nazi children really had no opinion of their own, they just followed in their parents' footsteps.
We have some pretty music for the children.
What shocked me the most when I went back to the Holocaust was how actually the Nazis treated the Jewish people and how they didn't care how the Jewish people felt.
I learned that even though it was very hard, people stayed very strong through it.
I was surprised by the number of people that perished during the Holocaust, knowing that diversity was something that you should cherish.
I learned that there was some hope for some people during the Holocaust.
I was surprised at the number of children that died in the Holocaust.
I learned that Hitler was a very selfish man.
The Nazis made Jewish people walk to their death.
It really shocked me that two-thirds of the Jewish population died during the Holocaust.
It surprised me that they must have helped the Jews, that when the Jews came to America,
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, do we have any, before you sit down, any questions or comments from the board?
So are, were they on, are they on display at the museum in Texas as part of a larger thing?
It's part of, it's going to eventually become part of a traveling one. By June 30th, their hopes start to collect, well, their hopes were to collect one and a half billion. I actually just got an email on Monday from the woman saying they've reached their total. So now they have additional ones that they're looking at, possibly sharing those with other museums. So after June 30th, they'll have it all put together. So right now, they're figuring out how to hang them all. They have a variety of mediums, as you saw, that the students use, so figuring out how to display all those, those different ones, all of them, how to be unique. I think we have 91 of them that we contributed to that.
Well, I love when students come and teach us things, and you guys said a few things in there that I didn't know.
Have you seen that movie, The Name of the Small Jewish Resistance during World War II? I forget the name of it, but it's in the last, like, five years. Tells their story of staying and fighting.
No, I don't think...
Wish I could tell you the name of it.
Amen.
Does she any of us remember?
Yeah, I saw it.
Did they get to visit the Holocaust Museum in Washington, D.C.?
Yeah.
And that was one of the things that was great about our study, is once the students got there, as eighth graders on the trip, it meant a whole lot more to them than years past when we haven't done it beforehand. I guess it feels good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for having me.
You're welcome to stay on our stand.
Yeah, from across the country.
Next item is the board president's report. I've got a few brief remarks. I know that, because we've got a full agenda. We'll get an update on school funding from Julie later on in the board update, so I don't want to cover that. One thing I spent a little bit of time on last, actually last night, night four, was looking at the CUP report, so the 2012 CUP report. For those who don't know, the CUP report is in essence a demographic and financial profile of every district across the state of Ohio. It's posted to the Ohio Department of Education website. It gives some good benchmarking data on how Olentangie is performing versus its similar peer group, as well as state averages, and then you can go and pick out specific districts to compare ourselves against. And so some of the observations that I think really jump out, if you look at our CUP report, you know, against the similar districts that get the state averages, there's a couple of, one, we've got really low spending per pupil, right? We're at $9,598 per pupil. That compares to a similar district average of about $10,750, and the state average of about $10,600. So somewhere between $800,000 per pupil, less than either similar districts or the state average. What's interesting is then when you look at the revenue components to that, we get a lower share of state funding. About 16% of the funding for Olentangie comes from the state versus about 19% for similar districts, and about 26%, like 43% for the state average. So what's, what's interesting is you can make an argument that local control really drives some better spending habits, and that to the extent that the vast majority of the funding for Olentangie comes from the local tax base, I think we've done a good job of being responsible, you know, with that burden. It also leans into a little bit of Julie's comments on the governor's proposal for school funding really addresses how District Cycle Olentangie aren't necessarily getting their fair share of state funding, in that we've got, we've been able to fund our growth, frankly, on the back of the local taxpayers. And I think the governor's proposal is a good step forward in addressing that issue and giving us, you know, so much needed help from the state. So I would encourage you, you know, if you're interested in doing that benchmarking, to look at the CUP report. It's, it's good reading, if you like that kind of stuff, which I do. I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lucas for the superintendent's report, race to the top update.
Thank you. I don't know if I would agree with you that it's good reading. I would agree with you that it's a good conversation starter at a, at a get-together. And it does obviously state the facts, so that is a great, great piece of information. I would encourage anyone to reference the CUP report, but also it is updated, just probably, what, a week ago? Which makes it even better in regard to how we're doing. If you recall last month, before I get into the superintendent's report, we talked a lot about the arts. We talked about the orchestra program, how it hit six out of eight superiors in, in different categories of state competition. This month, as you know, it's, it's winding down the winter sports season. I think what you're going to see in the superintendent's report is just a tremendous amount of accomplishments in regard to the school system. And I could probably stand up here a long time, as we all know, with all the accomplishments that we have, that there, that we had to kind of pare that down. Good things taking place. I, I wish this picture were brighter here, but Liberty High School Boys Soccer honored at the State House on, on Wednesday. As you recall, the Liberty Soccer Team, Division One state champs. As you also recall, we, we have the Player of the Year in, in Division One on the Liberty Soccer Team. So we're extremely proud of those individuals. As you can see, Representative Brenner had them down at the State House, and again, that's kind of the topping of the entire fall sports season. Along with that, something more recent, Olentangie Orange High School Girls Basketball Team in the state semifinals. I don't know if you had the opportunity to be at Ottervine last week at the regional finals against North Canton, but it was just a fantastic basketball game. Represent the, the district in a tremendous way, and we're very proud. They play tomorrow night at 6:00. They win. They play Saturday night, probably 8:00, yeah, with the Division One. So they are two games away from being state champs in, in girls' basketball. Olivia Ball over at Olentangie Liberty, state diving champion for the second year in a row. So we're very proud of her accomplishments also. Last weekend, I saw many of you, you could have made a weekend of Olentangie sports. Liberty Hockey made it to the Frozen Four down at Nationwide Arena. We jumped out to a 2-0 lead, unfortunately. Silvania came back and won that, but great, great season. I might add, by the way, you know, we talk about Liberty and being in the Frozen Four, some of their toughest games of the season were against Orange and Olentangie. So very proud of the accomplishments of all of those individuals. As you know, Liberty Boys Basketball, district champs, they lost one during the regular season. They were at the Fairgrounds, they, and also Orange, a good Northland team, great game all the way down to the end, lost, but they were district champs. Orange High School, I, I guess the, made it to the district finals, I should say, instead of district champs, and they played at the, the 12 o'clock game. And again, we're very, very proud of those individuals. We also had two wrestlers, Artem Chinko and Liberty student Jake Ryan, runners-up in the state wrestling tournament. And again, that's Division One. That's where, as they say, the big boys compete, and we're very proud of the accomplishments that they, they had throughout the season. And OHS, four swimmers, one wrestler qualified for the state tournament. Last but not least, we had Orange High School Boys Bowling, we're OCC champions. So again, I think what we want to really portray here is the fact, last month it was the arts, this month it's athletics. We have a lot of kids who do a lot of very, very good things in this school system, and we're very proud of their accomplishments. Along with that, we had Olentangie High School students earned a $10,000 grant, only two in the nation, for Youth United, and as you can read, that's a, a young people's group that educate, advocate, fundraise to build, to eliminate homelessness in Delaware County. I know we talk about this a lot during the year, is what are we giving back? You know, we talk, you know, Kevin referenced the budget and, and what we're getting, but I think the, the other side of that is what are we giving back? And our students do a great, great job, whether it be through working with homeless individuals or blood drives or whatever project that may be. As you, I think most of you were there, safety forum we had on March 7. I believe we had 72 individuals there. Obviously, we wanted more, but the video of that, that evening will be posted on the district website. Residents can also send along additional questions to our Get the Facts blog. Sheriff Martin was kind enough to attend, and Steve Hedges, who is the Director of Mental Health in Delaware County, was also there. I think, as we've mentioned in regard to safety, that, that's kind of a, a two-pronged approach, whether it's on the gun control side or on the mental health issue side. It was a very good night, two hours worth of conversation. Hopefully, the next time we, we talk about safety, we get more individuals at that meeting. But the days of talking about safety training for staff and students obviously is over, and you will see very soon, I believe, May 7th, all administrators have the training, and that night they talked a lot about Alice training, of which we will be directing on to our staff members in the Olentangie schools. Finally, finally, we can talk about the report card. We've been talking about it all year because it hasn't been official, but is, is now official, officially official, released in February. And again, we were excellent with distinction. I think this is old news, but as I tell, tell all of our staff, I meet with staff at the halfway point of the school year, and try to push through all staff members. I think this is just somewhat expected. The Performance Index 107.3, it's an all-time high for Olentangie, places the district within the top 6% of the, all districts in the state of Ohio. There's a lot of work taking place every day at the classroom level to get us where we are. I think everyone really understands that, but sometimes when you are, you produce at a high level every year, it just somewhat becomes the expectation as it should. But I think we do need to take some time to celebrate the, the work of our students, our parents, our staff members. We met 26 out of all 26 indicators. We met AYP, adequate yearly progress. We exceeded the growth measure in regard to value added. Now, there's also things out there, I'm sure you have read, the value-added rankings that I want to just touch upon a little bit tonight and somewhat set the stage for Mr. Fetties' annual report, that he will, since the report card has been released, he would be getting that in April. As you all know, we usually give that in November, but we've been waiting on the state report card results so that we can really measure how we've done. We do know and understand that we need to work on the misalignment in middle school math, we do know that. We are a member of SOAR through Patel for Kids, and this, this whole piece that we were talking about has a lot to do with our high-performing kids, especially in math at the middle school level. The ACT Quality Core is a more rigorous program, and that's the one that we use. Unfortunately, those individuals, in the grand scheme of things, are performing extremely well on ACT Quality Core from a value-added standpoint. They're not doing as well as they should on the OAA. And that's, we recognized that roughly a year or so ago, started working on it. It is better than what it was. We still have a little bit to go. The Common Core curriculum, as you know, that we are implementing and the process of doing, and assessments are even more rigorous, and we will have alignment in that, that math piece and in all subject areas in 2014. So you should see us do a better job in regard to that value-added ranking for next year. For now, ACT Quality Core Algebra I test is not aligned to the eighth-grade OAA. So again, even though our growth is good, it's not as good as Hilliard in regard to that, that ranking. We're not, we're not making any excuses. We do want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. From an OAA standpoint, they're doing better than us. But our ACT Quality Core growth is better, and is a better reflection, we feel. And our ACT Quality Core ranking is 15 out of 109. And the reason it's out of 109 is because not all districts participate in that Patel for Kids piece.
I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
Does the OYAA, or the OYAA?
OAA.
The OYAA, is it more algebra-based, or is our curriculum more algebra-based, or maybe Japanese?
Well, our curriculum is obviously more algebra-based because all of our eighth graders take algebra.
They have to take Algebra I.
Yes.
So our kids are ahead of it, but they're being tested on what the state standard is.
That's correct.
Which is a little below.
It would, it would be very much like you and I trying to work with our kids in algebra today, and we haven't had it for a long, long time, even though we were pretty good at it one time. I think what's happening, our kids are at a higher level, they're going through the algebra program, and then when the OAA comes along, it's actually... They're going through the algebra program, and then when the OAA comes along, it's actually lower. So there are things that they haven't really dealt with. They've been dealing with algebra throughout the year, and there may, for example, be measurement on, on the test. Now, again, eventually, they're going to, if they were to come back and study that particular piece, that gets back to teaching the test, if you recall. When we first got into this whole algebra program, we kind of hinted that, hey, down the road, just want you to know, our kids are going to be more advanced and have a more rigorous offering to take advantage of. And when it comes to the OAA, they may not be, they may not perform as well.
But then it also allows them, when they're in high school, to take that AP Calculus, AB and BC.
That is correct. In fact, those eighth-grade algebra kids are getting high school credit for those algebra classes. Now, one thing to keep in mind, and I, I guess this is what I would call a good problem because we're doing very well, no grade level was below growth on either the OAA or the ACT Quality Core. But for lack of a better term, bells are ringing going, uh-oh, look. I think, as you know, the reaction to anyone beating us in anything doesn't go over very well. So therefore, we know, okay, we have some work to do. And Mr. Fettie will hit this in much more detail in his annual report because he and Ian and Mr. Rafe have been very busy, and all the supervisors are part of that, really digging down, drilling down into that data, saying, okay, where are the specific concerns and where do we need the most intensive intervention? So he'll have more to talk about in regard to that at our annual report in April. I believe it's April 25th. Race to the Top update, as you know, we must get this every month. We have a regional, or had a regional meeting, March 7th. Our transformation team is meeting with Greg Sampson, our Regional Specialist, on March 19th at 7:30. We're learning more about the guidelines for PARC, that's the, that's the testing assessment group. Number of devices, number of testing sessions, timing of testing windows and bandwidth. You start saying, well, I put all those together, that's technology. Because as you know, that, that whole PARC piece is going to go from a paper pencil filling in the bubbles into a technology standpoint. And you look down through there, and these are some of the issues we must be dealing with. That bottom one, by the way, can get fairly expensive. Bandwidth requirements. And I'm sure Mr. Palmeroy will be keeping us up to date at the board level as we continue to expand our bandwidth and our number of devices that we use. I think at one time, you heard me say, back at that time, when our state superintendent was Dr. Hefner, he, he held up his iPhone and said, here's what kids will be taking the test on. I don't think we're quite there. But I do know that we have to look at a number of devices and, and have that available for our kids. And in order to have all of our kids testing, our bandwidth needs to increase. So we're working on that from a Race to the Top standpoint. Yes, sir.
There's been a few articles written about Race to the Top and districts' participation and continued participation in it.
Yes.
Where are we kind of in our evaluation of, does it still make sense for Olentangie?
I, I think, as we said at the very beginning when we got in, it's worth $40,000 a year to us, which, again, I'm not downplaying any amount of money. But when you're looking at some, some districts getting in the millions range, we're not even close. I think we got into Race to the Top because as education reformed, we wanted to be sitting at the table. We're not going to get much of a benefit from a financial standpoint. I think there still is a benefit from a being at the table standpoint. The, the unspoken agreement between us and the staff has always been, look, we're at the table. If at any time we don't like what we see, hear, or think, we're away from the table. And I think that's still in play. I have to credit our staff members, I have to credit Elaine, because again, it's, it's, by no means did we ever have to do this. It wasn't like they were dangling $100 million in front of us, they were putting $40,000 out there. We have individuals that want to get better at all times, want to be at the front of that parade of education reform. So I would say we will stay in for now, and I'll, I'll continue to say that, for now, as long as it becomes, stays beneficial to Olentangie. We had a, as you recall, a talk last, last month about central office reductions since 2010. And again, I'm not going to go down through, you can read those. But bottom line is, over the, since 2010, we've reduced six positions at the central office level. We also have staffing through the ESC, the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. We do get approximately 7.6 units of funding for supervisory positions available through the state. And we reevaluate those positions every year. And you'll see us move people in and out of those positions. And I say that because the next slide is going to show you that we are moving one of our individuals out of those, that position and back over to Olentangie. Along with that, that whole administrative staffing reductions that we've done since 2010 is amounting to roughly savings of $1.2 million just at the central office level. So we have a lot of people taking on additional duties. I know we had the conversation here about the restructuring of the organizational chart. We had some great conversation. I know we still have concerns out there. We have individuals doing additional duties, taking on different job descriptions. And along with that comes additional pay. And I didn't want to not be transparent in the fact that we have some individuals up for contract that are going to get an increase in pay, and those are referenced in their contract, as you have seen provided to you in the agenda. The agenda items you're going to hear about today, alternative learning options. Mr. Rafe has a great report for us. Those are options such as online, such as blended, dual enrollment programs, alternative options that we've been working on and has been a result of the Project 2020 work over the last two years of how can we continue to, I think Stacy said this in the, in the interview process with the attorneys. Our dilemma is somewhat how we continue to grow and stop building because we know how that affects our taxpayer from a, from a property tax standpoint. So some of our alternative learning option programs, Mr. Rafe will be covering. We're also going to have Mr. Fettie bring, give you an update on academic intervention. Tis the season, as they say, the testing, we just finished up OGT testing. We'll be coming into OAA testing, and you know, we, we test to test to test in, in Ohio to make sure everybody's doing their job, I guess, and obviously to measure student achievement. So that report will be coming up. We have administrative contract renewals coming up on the agenda. Again, I'll emphasize that some have additional duties and additional pay. I, I do want to highlight these three because Jennifer Iceman, Jeff Gordon, and Karen Truitt actually are not up in their cycle of contract, but they are taking on new titles, doing additional duties and additional compensation. For example, Jennifer Iceman, as you know, first came here as doing nothing. We went self-funded for the Workers Comp Program, she handled that. Well, now she's branched out into getting into a lot of safety issues, getting into a lot of classified personnel issues, and has done a tremendous job, not only in the Workers Comp piece where we've saved millions of dollars, but also on that, specifically on that safety piece. She's, we, we call her somewhat our, our safety hound in the district. Doors propped open, are you doing things right? How can we keep everyone safe? So she's on there for a contract due to that. Jeff Gordon, of course, has taken over for Mr. Kerr. He was the business manager, he has now moved up. And as you know, for those of you that go to the Development Committee meeting, the work he's been doing there. He's been tremendously busy, we appreciate what he has done. And he's, he's on for, for contract in regard to that. Last but not least, we have Karen Truitt, she is one of those individuals coming over from the ESC back over to the Olentangie Local School District, and that's the reason she's on for contracts this evening. Internoc Agreement, again, I, I sent out the information in regard to Internoc. Basically, what that says, it's an agreement with the power company during the summertime when peaks are very high, there's a potential brownouts. We, we sign up with them to give, have an agreement that we will power down, for lack of a better term, so that we don't have brownouts, and of course, they pay us for that. So that's what that agreement's all about. And last but not least, we have NetRequest software. Again, you were updated on that, but that's a software that, an organization with 23 buildings, even though we're not building anymore, we're now in the permanent improvement phase or the capital improvement phase. And what this software will do for us is, as we go through, in lieu of just saying, well, I think we need to blacktop this school, this school, this school, it somewhat puts it into at least a sequence that makes a lot of sense and says, okay, it's time to hit this building. And again, Mr. Gordon was instrumental in finding that software and bringing it to our attention. With that said and done, I have no further updates in the superintendent's report. I will entertain any questions that the board may have.
Thank you.
Seeing none. Johnson, a treasure's report.
One item I want to mention in the, the action items is the bond resolution for refunding. And I got a couple of questions on that. I think I answered the questions, but I just did want to emphasize that passing this resolution is, is just in preparation. We, we may not actually do the refunding until even May or June, so just wanted to point that out. Also, I wanted to update you on the Fiscal 14 budget process, that's been underway for quite some time. All the buildings and departments have submitted their budgets. We had our central office budget committee meet yesterday, reviewed all those budgets. We're still, still reviewing and slashing and that kind of thing. April 2nd, the Budget Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Finance and Audit Committee, will meet, and we will then review the budgets with that them. From there, we'll incorporate, I'll incorporate those budgets into the, the May five-year forecast, and we'll meet sometime in April with the full Finance and Audit Committee to review the five-year forecast, all with the end goal of sending to the board the budget and the May five-year forecast by the first meeting in April for the first reading.
Well, you really have one meeting in April, right? So it'll be the 25th. So when do we have to get the five-year forecast, not in May, right?
In, in May, we'll do the first reading, the first meeting in May, and then we'll have the second meeting and the second May meeting.
Perfect, okay.
I might add, they spent the entire day in, in there with, with that budget piece, so. I'm sure they got a lot of work done.
It is hard, but important work.
Yes.
Did you say the savings on the bond, you thought you estimated it $5 million?
It's, I think it was five or five and a half million at this point. If we don't, if we wait until May or June, you know, the rates could change. But there's, there's a liability piece there that we've got to make sure before we go forward with the refunding. So we're, that's the piece we're monitoring.
So tonight approves it, but it's not executed yet?
Exactly.
Any other questions? Public participation session number one for general comments?
None.
We have none, okay. Next up are discussion items. Mr. Rafe will have a presentation on alternative learning side options.
Thank you, Mr. Palmeroy. Good evening. We're here to discuss or present some options for an alternative learning facilities within our district and some, to explain to you some of the different educat, alternative educational options that we see in our future. Purpose of the presentation is to follow up to the report you heard last, last meeting on Project 2020, follow up to our high school capacity presentation that we did, actually quite some time ago. It was at a meeting we had over at Olentangie High School. And, and to help develop your understanding of alternative learning opportunities that will require us to have some type of flexible space different from our traditional high school setting. First thing is a follow-up to the capacity conversation, just so we're, we're clear on the, on the numbers that we're talking about. I think we came to some level of understanding with regards to our high school capacity that we can, based on what we presented to you, we feel we can comfortably, adequately move approximately 2,200 students through our high school on any given day. With three high schools, that gives us a total capacity of 6,600. Referencing back to our enrollment projections, there is a peak enrollment of about 7,200 students in our school district in the year 2021, 2022, somewhere in that range. So in between now and then, we need to find or create a way to have some type of alternative programming or space that's going to have to accommodate approximately 600 students, high school students during that peak enrollment period, as opposed to building a traditional fourth high school, which is certainly the most costly option to, for the future. And the other consideration there is that the enrollment peaks out at that point in time and starts to flatten out or trend down in the future. So we would end up building a building we don't foresee needing past that point.
So just so we're clear on the 2,200, that's up from the kind of long-held, I believe?
1650.
Of 1650?
1600 was the long-held stated capacity, yes.
Combination of schedule, capacity assessment.
Well, we already-
All of those things we considered in Development Committees there at the 2,200? Are we all, are we all in agreement at 2,200? Yes?
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so there's, there's five different options that I'd like to explain to you, talk with you about here tonight. They include Advanced Placement Academy. These are all different programs that we could potentially put into a different facility that will attract students out of our high schools and be served in a different facility. So those five, Advanced Placement Academy, a Dual Enrollment Center, Online Instruction Center, Online Learning Center, or a STEM Academy is an example of a specialized learning center that we're going to talk about. So first thing, in an Advanced Placement Academy, what we would propose doing is consolidating our AP offerings into one location. This would allow us to serve, more effectively serve the students. Typically, we have some AP classes that, that are lower enrollment. They've taken up a full class space, and we'd be able to use those class spaces for more students. We could develop AP programming that basically would just be housed in one location. So rather than two sections of it being taught by three different teachers in three different schools, we could have one teacher teach all six sections in one location and combine schools and open up more space. So just one example of a, um, alternative programming option with regards to AP. But again, the main, the main idea is that we're moving kids out of our current high schools into an alternative, alternative space.
And they'd stay there all day, you mean?
They could, again, flexibility is a key word in the future. They could stay there for as much time as they need to be there. And that, that's the same thing that could be in, in our traditional high schools. We don't have to have them there from 7:30 in the morning until 2:30 in the afternoon. They can keep, they can be there at any different number, any, any different times.
So it'd work out some sort of transportation to and from?
You know, again, we, we're working on some of those specific logistics. Sometimes, in, in a lot of those cases, we would like to not offer, have transportation. We don't want that to be a detriment to a kid not being, a student not being able to choose into a program like that. A lot of, well, most of these things apply at the junior, senior level. So kids are, are fairly mobile at that point in time, thank you.
They would get on a bus if you paid them.
Yes, yes, so, okay.
Just wait, Kevin, sometimes, just wait. So in this instance, you could-
Insurance is expensive, by the way.
Yeah, you could have, but he's got all girls. In this instance, you could have a student take their AP courses at one location and then come back to their homeschool for art, their band classes, or-
A lot of these, in, in, in all of these types of special programming scenarios, student interest drives what ends up getting delivered. So if we have a large number of kids who want to say, because like, just for an example, AP Art History and AP Music Theory are low enrollment courses in our, in our current high schools. If those are the courses that the kids want to take, then we would look at what other types of electives we might be, could offer there to support them in order to utilize the space, especially early on as it grows. And we're not at the point today where we need that space, but, but I really- And we're not at the point today where we need that space, but I really, I firmly believe that it's kind of like if you build the program, they'll start coming. Or mind you, with Oasis, we started with two students, we started with an idea and a concept, two students, and now we're serving over 120 people coming back.
Just don't need to offer things there. I mean, one of the reasons it's less expensive is because you're not going to have a football, you know, you're going to be having gym classes, or maybe they not have a lab kind of class, or those sorts of facilities. You could be real restrictive in what you needed to offer there to make it accommodate the space.
Correct. So that's one alternative. Another alternative is a dual enrollment center, and the purpose would be to expand our district dual enrollment offerings. Currently, we're using space, we're very fortunate to be using space at Columbus State's Delaware campus, but dual enrollment classes are traditionally courses that are taught on high school campuses. So we are doing somewhat of a different model with regards to dual enrollment. But in this case, again, using some type of alternative space, high school kids typically are more comfortable taking these types of classes with other high school students. So, you know, again, it's just something that we could quickly put into some alternative space and utilize very quickly in the future. And Columbus State's going to, as they continue to grow, their space is going to be limited. And we do not, unless they build additional facilities, don't foresee long-term being able to utilize their space. An online instruction center, this is something our curriculum and technology teams are working very, very quickly to develop online courses that can be used for the blended learning experience. An online instruction center with centralized development and implementation of online courses. Instead of a teacher working out off on their own somewhere, we would bring them together to collaborate. They then would have space to offer support and assistance to students. Students could come to them for seminar-type settings, group learning experiences. They could have office hours, they could collaboratively work with other colleagues in an online environment. There's a large school, P8 Cyber offers courses all throughout the world, but they have one location where they house their teachers. They all work through that location. So we could serve more students in a centralized location rather than them working out of space in our current high schools. We are currently offering, Mr. Fett, what do we have here? Four online courses that have been developed by our teachers. If you had already heard a presentation from the English teachers at Orange High School, the junior, senior English classes that are being offered at Orange High School. Now, again, those teachers are taking up space in Orange High School to facilitate that class. We move them out, open up their classroom, gives us more space in our high schools.
But in this plan, the students themselves would go there and take tests, or, I mean, be somewhat of that, or would it mostly be...
In this alternative, Mr. Dumber, this online instructional center, this mostly is an environment where, like in the case of a teacher, might be housed here, but the kids would be housed out in...
Taking them at home.
In cyberspace, yeah. But there is a location, that would be a location for them to go to if they did need to have a meeting with a teacher or get additional guidance. That, you know, the online environment is great. I do think there are those times where kids do need to go and see and talk to a person and get additional assistance.
And they do that with the online courses now? They have one or two extra...
Right, right. I'm taking an online course right now, and I got to the point where I was back and forth with my, and again, it's a, you know, it's a higher level than a high school course, obviously. So, don't they have to, wouldn't they have to stay away from the high school all day to save the space? Because I mean, if they go and leave for two classes and they come back... Well, even if they go away for two classes, that does open up two other, you know, in those two classes, we can put in another large group of students through those classes. But ideally, Mr. White, you are correct, we would like them to be there all day. Or we have one teacher from, say, right now, we have a teacher at Orange doing two classes. If we take that one teacher from Orange and have them do this online class at an online instruction center, now kids from Liberty could take that class, now kids from Olentangie could take that class. And again, anything we get them to take that isn't offered in our high school frees up space. But I got to the point in my class where I had to talk to somebody. I got tired of emailing back and forth, so I finally sent an email and said, could I please call somebody and speak to them? So I can imagine our high school kids feel that same way. Another online option is an online learning center, and this is more where we have space where kids do come to us and use our space and our technology to complete their coursework. And we have instructors there available that do provide direct instruction, direct online, direct support to those students. And this is the model we're currently using with Oasis. We have, you know, instructors there that, we have a math instructor, an English instructor, social studies and science, and they provide direct support and instruction to the kids when they need it. Most of their instruction is online. But in those cases, each one of those instructors is working with 120 kids, much like they would in a typical setting. So that is ready to go right now. We can move that into that space. Now, again, I think the natural question is, well, what about Oasis and we have that space? Well, we are going to have space limitations in the middle schools also. Shanahan is our biggest physical footprint. The four classrooms that are currently being used for Oasis could very easily be used for middle school enrollment as it grows. Just a moving target. And finally, a STEM academy is an example of a specialized learning center. STEM is fairly popular in the world nowadays. Stands for science, technology, engineering, I'm sorry, arts was supposed to be deleted from there, engineering, arts and math. There's a new buzzword coming out, it's called the STEAM Academy, science, technology, engineering, arts and math. But currently, the, you know, it's just a more of an interdisciplinary approach. Your English language arts instruction would be focused more on technical writing and those kind of things. So it's for students that are interested in science and technology, future engineers, future computer scientists, those kind of things. High-level academic program that would be, you know, based more on problem-solving skills. So it's, again, it's just an example. There are other academy-type approaches that you could attract, you know, a multitude of students from all three of our high schools. I just, you know, presented this one as one example. So finally, a couple other additional options we would use with a flexible space. We could house evening classes. Again, one teacher from one of our schools could teach a class in the evening, say 6:00 at night, and draw from all three of our high schools. Split-day sessions, again, could, you know, you could have a morning session or an afternoon session and extend it, because a lot of times in these kind of cases, you may not be attracting students that are involved in after-school activities. And, you know, it would be a prime location for a summer school or summer offerings, summer enrichment offerings, because of, when we have summer school in the buildings, it does limit our ability to do the cleaning and maintenance that we need to do. And then finally, pre-approved credit flexibility, this is growing by leaps and bounds. Students doing their credit through credit flexibility, they write an individualized credit plan and demonstrate to us that we, how they are going to meet the curriculum standards to get their credit. But we could house the teachers there that would oversee and monitor and provide feedback and support to the students who are in credit flex programs. Questions?
On the additional options, and I know no students actually listen to the tape, so I won't get killed later, but was there any discussion? And I don't know if it actually helps, but I come from California where they did it a lot with a year-round kind of program, because my niece is in a school with 3,500 students, but a lot of that is, she's in a year-round program. Does that help from a scheduling standpoint?
Absolutely.
Did we look at that at all?
You mean a year-round schedule?
Yeah, where it's, I mean, students go year-round. It's not just, they have summer school, but they're off non-traditional times, and it's a very different concept.
I mean, currently, we have a school calendar at the school, but I have had staff members approach me and say, I would love to double-a-teach in June instead of in September, or those, you know, and if we, you know, we have four, instead of three, you know, four quarters of the year, we really have five quarters of the year. So they could...
Yeah, and they're off for two and three weeks, and then they're off for nine weeks, and then they're off for two and three weeks.
We do have to be careful of that, because we do the majority of the maintenance and the cleaning and those kind of things that happen in the summer. And it is a compressed timeframe, and I don't want to commit to that with Mr. Gordon sitting next to my, I got to go back to my seat in the background next to him.
I was just wondering if it was discussed, and if it even helps.
Well, and I think an ideal situation, online would be ideal for that.
In the state budget, it's going through the House right now, they, there's a provision where it's not mandated how many days you have to spend in the classroom, but how many hours. And so that would grant us a lot of flexibility if that is passed. That's one thing that I'm not hearing a lot of argument over.
Well, I would only caution this on that hour piece. If we took our hours and converted our kids to go to school about...
Oh, we're in class longer.
136 days a year. I'm not sure how that would go over during in school, 136 days.
I know that's another conversation, but I did attend that one alliance meeting.
Can we just get one conversation?
Sorry.
Adam, let's add him.
Go ahead, finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was asking about the professional planning periods that teachers get for the two out of the day. And I asked if they were for the traditional teachers to teach the chords, math, science, reading. Their classrooms are empty during those two. And that was, when we first did that scheduling presentation, that was a question, something we talked about, and that's why we really believe, when we say our stated capacity of the high school is 1,600, a large portion of that additional capacity comes from the fact that if a teacher is not teaching, using their classroom at a given time for a period, because they do have a period for their personal planning and preparation, and then we have a period for collaboration and professional development that we work with them on. So in those periods, when they're doing that work, their classroom space is open. So what we used as an example, doing the math of 25 seats approximately per the number of classrooms, we felt we had space for an additional 500 students. So 1,600, previous stated capacity is 1,600, with just those 500 extra seats gets us about 2,100. But then there were other alternatives in that presentation.
That includes feeding them and parking and bathrooms. I mean, those are the limiting spaces or the common spaces. And already, they're eating lunch at 9:45, so...
Even in our current lunch structure, the capacity of the commons is, I think it's 600.
Sorry, Dave, I interrupted.
No, I didn't mean to talk over you. I didn't hear you start your question. I was just going to point out that that one alliance meeting that I attended, when they were talking about hours, and there's a group of superintendents, treasurers, et cetera, there was a lot of concern over switching to the hours, but that's a conversation later. But I do want to say specifically to this, as a clarification, when you had mentioned at the beginning about a building utilization study that indeed you had presented some time ago, there was also the young building utilization study that was extremely thorough that was presented at the final wrap-up 2020 meeting. And when you take all of that information and put together, I just think it's great from a strategic point of view, how integrated all of this information has become. And I just give a lot of credit to how that's all come together.
So we've kind of heard some options. Will we further discussion on how we narrow the options and choose a strategy in upcoming meetings?
Yes, yes. And then we, obviously, we have another conversation after that, is we'd be finding a site.
Yeah.
That would be next.
Which married the two up, right? The right site, the right option?
Correct, correct. That is key.
True. Any other questions, Mr. Rafe? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Mr. Fett on the academic intervention update, intervention update.
Intervention is good to care about.
Good evening. So I will be talking to you about academic interventions that occur throughout the school year. Dr. Lucas mentioned that testing season is upon us, and certainly it's a time where we can, in part, realize the fruits of our labor with interventions that we do with students throughout the year. But interventions are not only about testing and test results, they're about meeting the needs of all kids all the time, and really about facilitating our district mission to facilitate maximum learning for all students. So this presentation is designed to help you understand how our academic interventions work to fulfill our mission and to show you some examples of what's happening in the schools. All of this relates back to our continuous improvement plan. We have five benchmarks that directly relate to academic interventions. When you look at these benchmarks, they're about achievement, growth, fairness and rigor. Often, when we look at test scores and data, we look in the aggregate, we look at groups of students, and if we saw a score like 99 out of 100 students did well, we'd celebrate that, and that is worth celebrating. But the academic intervention mindset's about, what about that one student, and what can we do to get 100 out of 100? So the foundations of intervention in our district are listed here, and every teacher and administrator is involved in this process at some point. For example, Dr. Ian Way creates a statistical model every year to create student projections, to create those watch lists in the building. So those are projections of students' projected academic performance. Mark Rafe and I meet throughout the year with principals on their building improvement plans and their intervention plans to make sure, to monitor and make sure we're meeting our goals. Intervention teachers, gifted specialists, school psychologists, classroom teachers participate in all of these processes on an ongoing basis. There's multiple, multiple methods for intervention. The foundation of intervention is the building master schedule and purposeful and strategic scheduling. We do cluster grouping, where students with similar needs can be grouped in certain clusters to allow extended time with intervention teachers. For instance, a cluster of gifted kids in the same classroom at the same time, so the intervention teacher can push in, is the term we use, to provide services in the classroom. This is for gifted students, students with an AP. Intervention happens at all levels of achievement as well. The most effective intervention model is during the school day. Here, we often call it the double dip. An example of that is our literacy intervention. Leveled literacy intervention is a program, it's research-based, that our teachers use to meet individual needs, and we have great success with it. And our literacy support teachers and our intervention teachers, through creative building scheduling, find an extra reading period for students where they can focus in on specific needs of struggling readers. Another model is our intervention funds. My department reserves funds for the buildings into the start of the school year, so that once buildings get to know their kids and identify additional needs that they're going to have to meet, unique needs of the learners that they have that year, they can create intervention plans, something like a triple dip, for instance, and we fund those as needed, on an as-needed basis. An example of this is at Freedom Trail Elementary School. I just got their data back this week, and 23 of the 25 students that they worked with through this intervention strategy that they had for a third literacy intervention throughout the year demonstrated their growth goal, which is highly successful. Another model is our collaborative time, and teachers collaborating with one another. Orange High School is a great model for this. Todd Meyer has really clear expectations for teachers. Each department sets goals, creates plans for how they're going to address the needs of students, and he meets with them quarterly with his department chairs to see how they're doing, making sure that they're making progress to their goals. You see the SMART goal that he set for his staff this year. You can see at the second part of that, that it is built into, in response to formative and summative assessments, that's in response to those specific student needs that they see. Here's an example from Cheshire Elementary School. They have weekly collaboration time to get teachers together to, again, identify needs of students, look at assessment results, formative assessment results, and structure their interventions. This is also where they continue the conversations of the response to intervention, the RTI, and the intervention assistance team, the IAT that we mentioned earlier. Cheshire also has a monthly collaboration schedule. Justin Srope is the principal there, where he, once a month, gets together a much larger team throughout the building to look at how each of the grade levels are doing to meet the intervention needs of their students, pulling in guidance counselors, literacy support, and looking at all... support, and looking at all of the data that we have, standardized test scores, DRA scores is a, is a reading assessment that we have, student work samples to analyze how students are doing well, where their struggles are, and to really narrow and laser focus on what the next step is to meet the need of that student. So what's happening in the classroom on a daily basis, teachers are using formative assessment. It's one of the many interventions that happen in the, in the general classroom in an ongoing way. Exit slips, penalty-free quizzes, checkpoints, checks for understanding. So before instruction continues, we find out are the students where we expect them to be at this point of the lesson. This is a picture from Cheshire of an example of a formative assessment tool. Students have these key rings with stoplights on them, and the teacher can say, let me know where you are. Green means I'm good, yellow means halfway there, red means we need to stop right now, and you need to help me get where I need to be before I move on. And then lastly, chess, or, uh, intervention also happens outside of the traditional school day. Here's another example from Cheshire. Mr. Srope has organized the Cheshire Counts and Cheshire Reads Clubs. A great chance for mentoring as well is built into these opportunities. For example, the Olentangie High School JV Boys Basketball Club has been participating in Cheshire Counts and tutoring elementary students in math with great success. So in, in closing, our results have demonstrated that we've been successful. When we see the annual report next month, fingers crossed, we're gonna see 14 of 15 indicators met in these five benchmarks that I introduced at the beginning. There should be a 16th indicator, that's the one that we still don't know about from the state. The one indicator that we did not meet was our college remediation rate. Our goal is that our remediation rate decreases annually, and the percentage remained at 25%. As you know, though, I think we've talked about remediation rates, that's actually a, it's a state figure. If our students who go to state institutions, it's a lag in data, it's a very small number of students, but nevertheless, it's a high standard that we hold ourselves to, and that's the one we did not meet.
How are they tracking that?
The remediation rate?
Right.
Through college remedial courses that students take in Ohio Public Colleges. So they track what high school they went to.
So like my daughter who goes out of state, she's not tracked.
Right.
Because she goes to the school in Indiana. So it's only Ohio public colleges, well, public universities.
Right.
So, so that's not the full body of our graduating class.
What we've done this year, though, to get, because that's one of those annoying little data points that we keep looking at, is, um, we've joined the National Student Clearing House this year, which tracks data to private colleges and public colleges and out-of-state public colleges. And we only have two years of data now, so I do have some, some early data, but after another year or two, we're gonna have some really rich data on how our students are doing across the board.
And I still argue that before, that child may not have even gone on to college.
Yeah, that's correct.
If it's taking remedial English or remedial math. But now because we've put so much emphasis on going to that next level of education, we have more students who are doing that than we have had in the past. But we need to keep.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But that's, that's a really good point, because that's true. When you talk to the high school principals anecdotally, they'll say, that kid's in college, though.
Right.
And that's worth celebrating. So. That is it for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Board Committee Liaison Updates. We volunteer to go first, School Funding Action Committee.
Yeah, I wanna talk about that first. Yep. For those of you who don't know, the board numbers are assigned committees that we attend, and so when we're not here, we're usually off, well, the majority of us are off attending school committees, everything from school funding in action to development to finance and audit. Then we also sit on task force as well. And Stacy can update us on the task force too, because that's something important that's coming up. But the School Funding and Action Committee met on Tuesday night, and this is important for everybody to hear. The state budget is currently going through the legislative process, and on January 31st, the governor introduced his budget. So now it's in the House and being debated. The budget is a huge bill, 4,000 pages, that includes everything from state funding to Medicaid expansion to sales tax expansion to an income tax break. And all those pieces and parts are being looked at right now in the House, and everybody wants their voice heard. The good news for Olentangie is finally somebody recognized that for years, we have not been funded at the level with the majority of school districts in the state. If you remove transportation, the transportation cost from our state funding, I think it's $330 per student that we get from the state. $330 per student, when the state average is $3,100 per student. That's a huge difference. So when the governor's numbers came out, he realized that school districts who had enrollment rolled, ta-da, was being shut out of this school funding model. So when his model came out, it showed, and Dr. Lucas said, as it stuck out like a sore thumb, it showed that Olentangie would be getting a 331% increase. Well, a 331% increase of $330 doesn't even catch us up to the state average. It comes out to about $1,100 per student. And remember, I told you, the state average is $3,100 per student. So there has been some concern, as the bill is moving through the House, that rural and land poor school districts are not getting their fair share. Well, for years, Olentangie has not been getting their fair share. And I don't mean to sound like an elitist here. I went to one of those schools, K-12, that has been getting Olentangie's fair share for years. So I understand what it's like to go to a poor, wealth school district. But the fact of the matter is, is that for years, your tax dollars have been going to other school districts in the state and not staying here. So on the front page of our website, our Olentangie website, there's a call to action where you can let Representative Brenner, and he's the one to target right now, Representative Brenner know to support the governor's school funding plan, which is just part of the budget. Because Olentangie for years has been subsidizing other school districts who are lower performing than Olentangie, and we deserve to have some of that money come back to our school district. So if you want more information, I would be more than happy to, to explain that to you. We had Tom Ash, who is, he's the head lobbyist at the, at BAFSA, which is the Buckeye Association of School Business Administrators. He came and spoke to the School Funding and Action Committee on Tuesday night. I was very concerned because we've been hearing a lot of bleeding heart stories at the State House, but he was able to somewhat make me settle down to say, Julie, they're not talking, they're not saying, take the money from Olentangie and give it to us. But rather, their message is, leave those districts alone, but give more money to us. So I'm hopeful that we will be protected, but because school funding is just one part of this huge budget plan, if Medicaid expansion falls apart, or if the sales tax expansion falls apart, it's like dominoes, and the whole budget starts to get rewritten. We've already heard, this weekend already came out, that the Bill Hayes, Representative Bill Hayes, who's the subcommittee chairperson that's hearing all this education testimony, he's already said that he and his subcommittee members are gonna meet with stakeholders to make changes to the school funding plan. That kind of worries me, because you never know what changes legislators are going to make to plan us. But we will be watching this and continue to watch this closely, and it might come down to, we might have to have Dr. Lucas or even Todd go and testify in front of the full House Finance and Appropriations Committee, so that our voice can be heard. I do have some good news to report, and I don't know if anyone participated. I was here at a committee, the area task force meeting last night, but Governor Kasich did have a town hall, a phone town hall meeting in Southern Delaware County where he, they just randomly called houses, and if you picked up, you got to participate. And one of our, I heard from a district, uh, district resident today, and she participated, and he specifically talked about Olentangie in his town hall meeting last night, and said, school districts like Olentangie deserve the money that is in this funding plan. So I was very glad to hear that come from him. It's his plan, he should be supporting it. But if anyone wants to see the numbers, I, I do have the district numbers, there's 32 pages of every school district in the state of Ohio, and you can see what we're getting versus what everybody else has been getting for years, and we'll get with the new plan. But it's imperative that we let, right now, Representative Brenner know to back this plan, and then when it goes over to the Senate, it'll be sometime in May, we'll have to get on Senator Chris Jordan to let him know that this money is needed, and, and that is a project of our School Funding and Action Committee. And if, well, we're gonna wait and set the next meeting as to when hearings start in the Senate, and we don't have an exact date of when that will happen, but we will put that next meeting date out, so that you all can come, because you're more than welcome to come and sit and participate in this very important committee.
Is that being considered in the five-year forecast?
No.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that when the time comes in May, but right now, it's preliminary number, so we'll, maybe something we maybe put in the risk assessment to where, you know, if this does happen, this is what the numbers would be, something like that.
It still, it still has to go through the House. Right now, it's in the subcommittee, it's in the primary and secondary House Subcommittee of the Finance and Appropriations Committee. Then it'll go to the House Finance and Appropriations Committee, then it'll go to the House floor, and then every step of the way, changes can be made. And then it goes over to the Senate, and then the Senate hearing start in the primary and secondary funding Subcommittee. And then it goes to the full Senate Finance Committee, and then it goes to the full Senate floor for votes. And if the Senate doesn't concur with what the House did, then it goes to a concurrence, it'll go to a concurrence committee. Changes can be made all the way through, and I would not support putting any of these numbers in the five-year forecast, because it's a moving target right now. If we would put this in the five-year forecast, and then it wouldn't fall through, boy, we would be in a world of hurt.
So, and so I agree, we shouldn't put it in the five-year forecast. We submit to the state, but we should model it, so we know.
Oh, yeah, what it's gonna look like.
So what we submit for the five-year forecast, I think you're right, is based upon what we know.
Today.
And then we should be able to run scenarios off of that.
Right. And the May is just an update for the October. The official five-year forecast comes out in October, and by law, this has to be voted on by June 30th of 2013. And I haven't tried, we've done like six-month preliminary budgets, or, you know, budgets to get us through, but the goal is to have this done by June 30th.
Well, the question in the modeling, we'd have to decide would be, are we using it to increase the budget or to replace expenses that we have in there right now, saying it's gonna replace, you know, whatever taxpayer fund money is coming from the local taxpayers? See what I'm saying? Bye-bye.
Well, it'd be part of an overall budget picture.
I mean, you'd layer in the new funding and see what that meant.
Oh, I add to that, that Tom did do an excellent job of explaining the process, but I was also, I was glad to see that there were people there who weren't on the committee.
Right.
And I thought, that's gotta be really beneficial.
Yeah. And Dave came, because Stacy couldn't be there. When we have these committee meetings, we're allowed to have, by law, you're allowed to have two board members there. So we let people, we let each other know, hey, I can't make it, can you make it to a meeting? And so that works out, so we have a lot of good coverage between the four of us. So that's been working out well.
Something like that.
I have, I have to add, because we have an audience, and we've been saying this, and if for no other reason to get involved, there'd be a thing called tax relief. We have looked at models already, and we know that if things stay as they are, we could potentially stretch this, this levy out to 2018. And that's not a good enough reason to get someone excited. I don't know what is. So I'll throw that out there, at the risk of going out on a limb, because I'm looking to talk.
Just like.
He's going, oh, please don't say that. But we think we can get there, if it stays as is.
And that's a meaningful decision. That's a good.
When you consider that Hamilton Township hasn't been on the, it hasn't asked for additional tax money for operations for 20 years, because they've been getting our money, that's a huge step for us.
Yeah. All right, great. Terrific update. Development Committee?
Which one?
Development.
Okay. Development Committee, I'm trying to think what happened at the last meeting, because we did this update. Lot of talk about TERF. They became, there was a subcommittee meeting too that Dave and Julie went to, and then Julie and I were at the, at the main meeting, getting educated on TERF, really, trying to come up with some guidelines and, and recommendations on what we'd say the minimum standards have to be. So had an educational session at the subcommittee meeting on everything down to stitching and glue and, and what type of fiber, and educated a, a large group of people. And that's a, that's a really wonderful, experienced group of volunteers we have, none of which would say they're TERF experts. And so now I think the statement that everyone said was, they know enough to be dangerous about TERF. So looking at that in the event that TERF comes back up before the board, that, that the board asked that the Development Committee really be able to give some good recommendations and work with Jeff on, on what those guidelines should be. Also, so really looked at the NetRequest software, those sorts of things that Jeff has planned, and it's a wonderful tool, got a demo, got some real good opportunities to ask questions and see if it really meets the needs of the district. And I was incredibly impressed with the software, from, you know, going from spreadsheets to really having a software that allows us to really bake in all the things that the district needs. And anything else from the Development, that was where the main TERF was.
Oh, on the, the subcommittee, Dave can help me out on this, we had a subcommittee meeting to, to educate everybody on how to make minimum standards for TERF, and the person that they brought in was phenomenal. He is, he's a manufacturer of TERF, but he doesn't have any skin in our game at all. So he was telling the committee, if you're gonna buy TERF, you want a six resin on it, 6C resin on it, and you want these kinds of loops instead of these, and this kind of glue instead of this. And he came in, Jeff brought him in, because he had heard him at a, another meeting, and there were things I would have never considered, and it's kind of like going to a car manufacturer, and they tell you exactly how they make the car, and now you feel a lot better when you go out and buy the car. And I'll tell you, after hearing that TERF discussion, I was just, well, it was three hours, but.
It was excellent presentation, and.
Go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry.
He also spoke to process. He gave his do's and don'ts about the steps you should take to assure that you get what your expectations want to be.
Inspections, wanted your inspections.
Right. So he had some good do's and don'ts. I, I have followed up with Jeff, have gone through the spec, asked him questions as a follow-up to the presentation. Jeff's done a great job of follow-up, talking to other school districts, talking to that further conversation with that consultant. He has, Mr. Siles from the Development Committee suggested a name with Ohio State. Jeff is reaching out to him, not made contact yet, but the TERF guy at Ohio State. So it, great job.
We had to put it in context. So about a year ago, we had three groups that were pursuing a TERF strategy. The board at that time put forward kind of a rough framework of what a successful strategy may look like, say, from an economic basis or a strategic funding basis. Now the Development Committee is putting together a set of standards from which these groups can then operate on, what the quality and the sufficiency of the product and the pressure may look like. So as those groups are out doing their fundraising, we're making sure we're ready, both, whether it's the economic framework or the quality framework, so that, you know, should they come back, that we'll have appropriate structures and standards in place. So it's good work.
The other one was the Diversity Task Force. They've had four great meetings now, and that was what was scheduled for that task force. First, we identified issues in the district around diversity, and then spent the last two meetings really coming up with solutions, separating people into groups of middle school-focused, elementary school-focused, high school-focused, district-wide focused. And I walked out, was it last night? Ninety-four?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
No, Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Tuesday night.
Walked out really impressed with what that group came up, and this is a group made up of community members, parents, teachers, administrators, school board members, and came up with some real tactical things we can do to work on diversity and OCR complaint issues in our district, and really impressed with the level at which they wanted to stay involved and saying, can we come? One of the members even sort of voluntold, was voluntold to come and present to the board, and so really give you a good breakdown on the work that that group's done. So I'm, I'm hoping that Linda will have someone scheduled in for the next appropriate meeting to talk about the work of that group, because I, I really can't begin to say how impressed I was with the level of conversation that. I was with the level of conversation that people were willing to have and the level of commitment they were willing to have to help solve the problems.
Okay. So Finance and Audit Committee?
I'll just mention nothing.
Oh, yeah? Policy Committee?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to do Finance and Audit?
Nothing on policy.
Nothing on policy? Okay.
OEF Med, Only Tangi Education Foundation Med. And I'll have information at a future meeting about how they netted out on the casino night. But I'll do, I will mention for the benefit of our teachers and principals who are here or listening, that information will be posted soon. Jack, you can help me out. But regarding teacher grants and scholarships, it's already underway.
Yes, right after spring break.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that's forthcoming. Teachers and principals can be looking for that information.
Adam, do you have anything? So that should be it for board committee updates? Terrific. Public participation session number two regarding action items. We have, well, 12 people have chosen to speak or have submitted sheets to speak. So if we could, since we have a lot, we're going to try to keep it to five minutes each, in theory.
Five minutes, is that...
And 30 minutes is the maximum amount per session, if necessary. Let's try to keep it within 30 minutes. Mr. Johnson, if you would, just the general rules of public participation.
Step up to the podium, say your name and address, and he'll give you a warning when you're down to a minute to go.
Carl Sullivan, you're up.
You should come up and meet first.
It would be public participation without...
That is true. That is true. I wanted to make a couple of comments tonight about a couple of the action items. First of all, I might also make a comment in response to you, Kevin, that another good way to extend the levy is to make sure that we have prudent fiscal management, and something that I've often disagreed with this Board on. One thing I do agree with this Board on is providing an excellent education to our children. I just disagree in the means that you go about it in some cases. I have a couple of examples tonight. You had earlier today, and I wasn't able to attend the sessions where you interviewed the law firms, but I was a little bit concerned that we only had three firms that were represented. I'm hoping that you're going to have more interviews, that this isn't it. If this is it, frankly, it's a disappointment. I will tell you that I had a conversation with a senior partner of one of our large firms in Columbus, and I happened to be talking to him about something else, and I mentioned to him that I was coming to the meeting tonight and that I understood that the Board was interviewing law firms. And he said, oh, he said, I didn't know anything about that. He said, we would have been interested in making the presentation. He said, you know, how is this publicized? And I said, well, I really don't know because I didn't hear anything about it until I saw it on the agenda. I think this is really something that, this is where I come to disagree with the Board on. You know, when we have an opportunity to shop for a service, whether it's a law firm or whether it's something else, we ought to do a diligent job of making sure that we get proposals and evaluate the options in the most effective manner. Talking to two small law firms and one large firm, Bricker Firm, which is a fine firm, seems to me to be a very small group of law firms in a community this large. The Columbus area has a number of fabulous law firms, many large regional firms like the Bricker Firm that do a great job. But there should have been a more robust effort to solicit proposals and to ask other firms if they wanted to submit proposals. So if three is it, I'm very disappointed, and I don't think you've done your due diligence at shopping for legal advice for our school district. And he also said, I might add, that we're very interested in this area of law, and we would have been very aggressive on our pricing. Those are his exact words to me. We would have been very aggressive on our pricing, because that's an area that we're doing more and more of. I would also tell you, they have great expertise in collective bargaining. They do a lot of public sector collective bargaining work for school districts and townships, and also other areas of law that would be of interest to a school district. So that's an area that I have great concern about. I wish there was a more robust outreach to find a good value for our school district. I'm not saying you necessarily go with the lowest price, but I think there's a value proposition that you need to evaluate when you look at law firms. I've hired law firms for 30 years in all areas, everything from intellectual property, product liability, labor employment, many other areas. In some cases, you need multiple firms to handle multiple areas because they tend to be specialist areas that have to be focused on, you know, by certain firms that are good at that area. So anyway, I just, I had some concern about that. My other concern was the increases for the administrative people. My understanding is we have increases going up to 35%. Now, I understand when you promote somebody, I understand when you give more responsibility. But I think that the Board owes it to the public to have a better explanation than having an agenda item under A1 and A2 that just lists, you know, generally the people, and doesn't list what your, what the exact dollar amount is or what the percentage is and what the reason is. There ought to be some kind of explanation for somebody getting an increase of 25, 30, 35%. I find it hard to believe that we had to do that kind of an adjustment for somebody. It almost begs the question, did we under-hire, did we hire them under the market to begin with? But it's not, I don't think it's good fiscal management to, you know, be throwing around 15, 20, 25, 35% increases at a time when people are employed, when people working for companies are getting 1% or 2% increases, in some cases are getting wage freezes. It doesn't sit right with a community, it doesn't sit right with voters and with taxpayers. Those are my two comments tonight. I thank you for your time.
So a couple clarifying statements. So on the law firm search, we ran a complete RFQ, Request for Qualification process. Carl, you're welcome to talk to Mr. Johnson about the breadth of that process, but the three firms we talked to tonight were the finalists, and it was not the complete population of firms considered. And I do think we ran a sufficient process to get us to those three names. Todd would be more than happy to have that discussion with you. If you share the name of the firm that you referred to, we can see if they're in fact in that list or not.
We need to move on.
We could confirm that or not. That person didn't, it doesn't mean the firm didn't. Second, administrative salaries. One thing, you know, I referred to the Cup Report earlier.
I have it up on my screen if you need notes.
I have it in front of me.
Okay, good.
If you look at average administrative salary for Only Tangi District, it's about $81,353. If you compare that to our similar district average of 89, $89,239. And of the two districts that we compete for the most talent for, Arlington and Dublin, at 103,668 and 103,166, I think we've got a demonstrated track record of being very disciplined on administrative salary, both against similar group, the state average, and across the two districts that we compete most directly for for administrative talent. Okay?
My clarifying comment is, is that we are not replacing six administrators, and the increases do not come close to totally what those six administrative salaries are. I can't remember what the savings was, but it was...
1.2 million.
Okay, so 1.2 billion in savings, and that includes any increases.
Correct.
Can I make one clarifying about the...
Can you return it?
Yes. There are eight districts that sent in proposals. I also received...
Firms.
Or firms, yes. I also received three phone calls from other firms that were interested, asking specific questions about the district that we never received any proposals from. And the majority of the eight actually were from outside central Ohio, which tells me that a lot of people in the state of Ohio, a lot of firms in the state of Ohio did receive that request for qualifications. Eight did submit, three had phone calls but didn't submit. And as Mr. O'Brien said, we settled on those three.
And we don't specifically go with one attorney. We pick which law firm is going to suit our needs. We might do construction at one firm, special ed litigation at another firm. So, and that was discussed at length tonight of having a menu of services.
Okay. Next up, and I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce any of these names. Anne Ruland, Roland? Did we lose Anne? Help me out. Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Anne Ruland, 902 Boville Lane Powell. I'm a parent at Wind Out Run Elementary School, and would just like to offer my support to not accept the resignation of Principal Armbrust. I think she's a great addition to the school. I think she works well with the kids. She's with every event we've ever been involved. I'm also a pack leader for Cub Scouting, and she's very supportive of Cub Scouting, Girl Scouting. I just feel like she's a great asset and really looks at the whole child and not necessarily concerned about the testing and everything they have to go through to credit our district or to credit a school. She really is very much looking at that one child. And I just think she should get a lot of credit for the, I believe, three years she's put in at Wind Out Run. So, thank you.
Kimberly Wingart?
Kimberly Wingart, 1062 Mendel and Court, Powell, Ohio. I'm just here to support Miss Armbrust in not accepting her resignation. I have two children there. She has been a visible person in their lives, unlike her predecessor, who you never saw. I don't care what time of day it is that I walk in that building to pick my child up. For whatever reason, she is there. She's outside saying hi to everybody, hope you have a great day. I think it would be a disservice to let her go. Thank you.
Tammy Holshoff? Holshoff?
I'm Tammy Holshoff. My address, 280 Ashmore Drive, Powell, Ohio. I am a parent of a second and third grader at Wind Out Run. I also support not accepting the resignation of Principal Armbrust. She, I agree, she, it's nice to walk into a school and see her smiling face reading the kids by name. And she, for the first, the first year, her predecessor, I never heard my two girls speak about the principal, but they speak about her all the time. So I know that she is, you know, down and dirty with them, if you will. She's not afraid to eat lunch with them, she's not afraid to sit down and cuss to Indian style on the floor with them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Kate Gilbreth?
I'm at 1063 Mendel and Court in Powell. I appreciate you guys listening to all of us and the things that we want to say, because I'm here in support of Christine Armbrust also. I think for a lot of the parents at Wind Out Run, her resignation kind of came out of nowhere. I think that, I don't know of anything that she hasn't met commitment-wise, so if there were like things that she had done wrong. I don't know a lot of parents that know what those things are. So what concerns me is that there is an apparent lack of transparency in the process, and I think that that's something that we need to understand more about. I'm also concerned that there's a vocal minority that's speaking for more people than might make sense, and that's why I'm here tonight. I want to make sure that you guys know that she was, she is ever-present at the school for both the students and the parents. Every time I'm there, she's talking with students in the hallway, she's talking with parents in the hallway. Again, I never saw the principal before. I have two children, and we got occasional emails, and we would see her at open houses, and that was kind of it. We get communications from her one to two times a week, keeping us abreast of all the things going on at the school, which is really nice as a working parent. But probably a recent example that was important to me was during the shootings over Massachusetts. She gave us very timely communications that day and in the days following that helped me feel that my children were safe. And I don't know that that's something I would have felt with other people in that position, and that's really important. Of course, the education is why they're there, that's most important, but they need to be safe when they're not with me. So I don't think there was any doubt that she was passionate. I mean, that she's passionate with what she does. She's old school, you know, so she's kind of got that strict and powerful air about her. But the students are always at the forefront of what she does, and there's never a commit, there's never a question of her commitment with the students. And mostly, I think she's very approachable. Parents that aren't there every day with the PTO, I'm a working parent, she knows who I am. She asks for feedback. She encourages us to give her ideas of things that we think can work better. So I appreciate the time. Thank you. And I do hope that you do not accept her resignation.
Thank you. Stacy Leeper?
Hello, my name is Stacy Leeper. My address is 2223 Wright and Drive. I'm the parent of two students at Wind Out Run. Our family is fairly new to the district. We just moved in at the beginning of last year, and so far, we have had an excellent experience, from the principal to the teachers, secretary, support staff. It's really been fantastic. Everyone has been wonderful. So I am not here to complain tonight, but I am here to stand in support of our principal, Christine Armbrust. Like other parents have said, she's extremely visible in the school, whether outside in the morning greeting the students when they're getting out of the cars, coming off the buses, chatting with students in the lunchroom. And anytime I come into the school, I mean, she's often right there in the office giving a handshake or a pat on the back. I believe that she wants to help our children reach their full potential, not only in the classroom, but in other very important ways as well. In the short time that she has been the principal at Wind Out Run, she's started some great programs for the kids. She started Student Council, which my daughter was a part of, it was fantastic. Video news, she now has the fifth grade students hang the flag in the morning and bring it down in the afternoon. Programs like this help our children grow into young leaders, learn accountability and responsibility, and help them to have a voice in their school. Ms. Armbrust works with an enthusiasm and an energy that's contagious. In addition to supporting the academic growth of our students, she does things that are far above the responsibilities. A couple of examples would be breaking leaves for a teacher in the school who was unable to herself because of medical reasons. And recently, one of our students had to go to the emergency room, and after school, Ms. Armbrust went to Children's Hospital, sat with that student and her mother in the emergency room, and actually stayed with the student so her mom could go and get some dinner. So things like that are what make her a remarkable, remarkable person. I think it would be a great loss to our children, our school, and our community to lose Ms. Armbrust. I am here tonight, and I know there's a lot of other parents here tonight. I feel like if more families in our school knew that Ms. Armbrust would love to stay at Wind Out Run if given the opportunity, I think you would hear from a lot more people as well. So I respectfully ask the Board to consider these points before approving her resignation. Thank you.
Hi, Jackie Snyder, 315 Ashmore Circle West. I have known Tina for eight years. I am not here to tell you how much I like her, I'm here to tell you how much I love her and I adore her, and I feel like she is a partner in my children's education. My son went to St. Michael where she was principal there, and I fell in love with her. She was adored by many at the school, and I was overwhelmed with joy when I found out she was coming to Wind Out, which my youngest son is a third grader now. I feel as though Tina is a positive force for our children. I feel that she empowers children, that she encourages leadership. The second day or prior to her even starting... The second day, or prior to her even starting in August of 2011, or whenever she started, there is a child that was in my son's class that has cancer. He was down at Children's. And she did not know this family. She did not know the child. She had just heard of it. And she went down there frequently and prayed with the child. And she helped set up websites where the children could actually send letters to him. She goes above and beyond. As Stacy mentioned, there is a child at our school. The mother is going through chemo. She went to their house last fall, and she raped the leave so their mother would not have to worry about it. She attends funerals for employees of their extended family just to pay her respects. I mean, this isn't a teacher that wants to do a good job. This is a teacher that wants to do an amazing job. She wants to teach these children. She's compassionate. She's nurturing. And she does want to stay at Wyandotte. She does not, this is not her hopes to leave. This is not her will to leave the school. She has a lot of work to be done. And I am pleading with you to please do not accept her resignation. We need that woman at the school. Last Friday, I went to pick up my third grader early to take him to the hockey game. And when I walked up to the buzzer, a man in sloppy fatigues with tattoos on his arm came up behind me, but didn't get very close to me where the camera could see him. And my husband was waiting in the car. And I buzzed, and they let me in. And as soon as I walked in, Mrs. Armbrust was standing right there. And I said, "Is everything okay?" She said, "I'm just checking to see who is behind you outside, because I don't recognize them." If we ever, God forbid, had a Sandy Oak at our school or any type of tragedy, I would feel so comfortable with Christine Armbrust guarding my child. I honestly would. I mean, that's how comfortable I feel with this woman. Every single morning, she's out. My kids do not ride the school bus. I can't pay them. She is out there. She's greeting. She's saying hello. She's ruffling the kids' heads and, "How are you doing today? And isn't it a gorgeous day?" When I go into that school, she's in the lunchroom every single time. I go in, and she's sitting up at the front of the lunchroom with the special needs children, and she's letting them ruffle her hair because they get a giggle out of it. Or I've walked into the school unexpected before, and she's sitting on the floor with her knees crossed, consoling a sad child. I mean, this woman goes above and beyond. And it's sad that from what the community is hearing is that she's being forced out, that she does not want to go. And I've had so many phone calls, even now from teachers, that feel like they're kind of like being bullied because they're in support of her. And I just, this is a tragedy. This is a tragedy for the parents in our community that our children attend there. And I'm pleading with you to please, please, please reconsider and not accept her resignation. Please, for the sake of all of our children that attend the school. Please. Thank you.
Brenda Eddy?
Good evening, I'm Brenda Eddy. I live at 1279 Daventry Lane in Powell. I won't take much of your time. I appreciate your staying and listening to all of us tonight. I have to reiterate what every parent has said so far about Christine Armbrust. This is our last year at Wyandotte. My child's been there for six years. I have experienced two principals. Cannot say anything negative about the first principal. Can't say anything negative about Wyandotte. It's a wonderful school. Has been a wonderful school for a long time. I can also tell you, in three years, there is now, there's a vibrance in that school that came with Christine Armbrust. You open the door, and it bubbles. The administrative staff, her immediate staff, bubbles. They all group people. They all overflow with compassion for the children. And that is a bit of a change. She, I think, is just a truly incredibly dedicated and gifted woman. We did, and very professional. We had an incident in our neighborhood recently with a little bit of bullying going on the school bus. I know the parents involved. It was not my child. I know both sets of parents involved. I know one call was made to the school, and the next day, it was totally resolved. To everyone's satisfaction, those two kids are now friends on the bus and joke back and forth together. So, I think she knows what she's doing, and she is just so totally full of dedication and compassion for that school. So, again, I do wish you would reconsider the possibility that we could ever lose her in our school system. Thank you.
Kate Blatchley?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Tonight, actually, I was supposed to be presenting at my own school board meeting. And so, it's different to be a community member and presenting this this evening. I'll tell you, I've had the privilege of being an educator for 23 years, 15 of them serving as a building or district-level administrator. Currently, I get to be a special education director at a career center. I've got all the licenses. I hold a superintendent's license. I can even drive a CDL bus. I have my CDL, so I could drive school bus, not that I ever would want to. But the most important title that I am blessed to have is to be a mom, the mom of three children that have gotten to hear your meeting this evening. All three go to Wyandotte Run Elementary in grades 5, 1, and kindergarten. I was absolutely shocked to read Ms. Armbrust's email. Obviously, I'm a working parent. I'm not in the school building every day. But each time I am, she greets my children first, which I appreciate, and then she follows up with us. We're not complaining parents. We're typically able to handle that with the teachers. I am, however, compelled to come tonight because you need to know the gem you have in her. She's made such a difference in our lives. She's the leader that I want to influence my children. Her infectious laugh, genuine listening ear, strong presence and commitment to education is what I've grown not only to love, but to expect now. I expect that every single day from her. When I drove my daughter away, this kindergarten, knowing that she was at the helm, keeping my children safe, and encouraging their teachers to keep them challenged, is what made them leaving all under one roof even bearable. In fact, one night, we were leaving a Cub Scout meeting, and Ms. Armbrust again greeted my daughter Grace first, talked about this kindergarten project. And when we were leaving, Grace said, "Mommy, I want to grow up and be a principal like Ms. Armbrust." I just don't think it gets a bigger or better endorsement than that. I'd say and do just about anything to ensure our paths continue to cross. I'm very familiar with the Ohio Principal Evaluation System. I'm going through it myself. I appreciate your goals, Dr. Lucas, in reading them this evening. I also appreciate the community member who talked about the full transparency. I'm not sure as a community member I'd ever considered that. I would be happy to provide any evidence going line item by line item through that principal evaluation system as evidence that I've seen as a parent. Lastly, I think that she not only teaches my children, but she teaches us. She puts out a blog. And her May, her November 13 newsletter reminded us to be grateful for our overlooked blessings. The 15th was a posting about the pearls of wisdom. And most importantly, was her posting about 50 Things That Really Matter. She wrote about how she was reflecting by her fire circle and the gift of self and what we should write down for our children to learn what is important and core values for ourselves. She grounds us as parents. She reminds us, both parents and children, of the real blessings we have. She is a blessing in this district. And I would certainly appreciate any consideration to rejecting Line Item Action 14A9 and not accepting her resignation. Thank you.
Tom Kipfer?
It's Tom Kipper. I live at 413 Ashmore Circle East. And I'm not quite sure what I can say in support of Christine Armbrust that you haven't already heard tonight. I do come risking conflict of interest because my wife is one of your employees. She's a music teacher there at Wyandotte Run. My son Tommy is a third grader. I'm also the pack committee chair of the Cub Scout Pack. And I'm pleased to see many of my leaders and parents and scouts here tonight. I'm afraid I don't know many of you. I know, Dr. Lucas, you came to my home. We hosted you for a coffee, and we're supportive of the school levy. We've been supportive of every school levy. I do want to say a couple of things, though, before I talk about Christine Armbrust. First of all, I enjoyed the meeting tonight. And I'm sorry that our middle schoolers couldn't, that presented on the Holocaust couldn't attend the entire session as well. I hope you encourage that type of participation as well. It's helped me reflect a little bit about the past. Certainly not back to World War II, but to my own past here at Olentangie. Because about in this spot was where the office was or the building, if you look at the collection of buildings that are right here on this small little campus, where it's K through 12 in one building. And I remember being here, looking out the windows as a husband of a teacher, as other teachers and parents were gathering, students were gathering, as we were getting ready to march up to the new high school. And it was amazing to see that kind of growth and expansion and to see us, over 23 years that I've lived here, build high schools after high school and elementary school after elementary school. And I've come across a lot of administrators and a lot of board members. And I know more ex-board members than I know all of you. And a lot of principals. And I have to say, I have to add my shock to seeing the letter that came from Christine. I think I would have been more surprised if she cited exhaustion as a reason. Because, Jackie, you're right. I mean, she's there all the time. I remember having to drag her away at 9 o'clock one night, take her to dinner, to ask her to join us for dinner, because my wife was also there late at night. And I think we were attending a Cub Scout meeting as well. So, her dedication and passion should not be a question. And I hope from what you've heard tonight, she possesses the skills to be an excellent principal. I had the unfortunate situation, not many people know. I was in my own job transition two summers ago. And I chose to take my time and donate it to scouting. And through that, I became acquainted with a lot of your principals because I was trying to get your principals to open the doors to allow us to come in as a membership drive to recruit new scouts. And I was a little bit apprehensive going to my own school to ask Christine. As a matter of fact, I met her before Lori did, my wife. And she was very open. She asked a lot of questions. And I walked away from that meeting surprised. And I went home and said, "Lori, you're not going to believe the kind of principal you have." I have not met leaders in business as qualified as she was. She lives leadership. She's a consonant professional. And if you approve the 17 other principals and assistant principals and you overlook Christine, you are doing a disservice. So, I just strongly ask you to reconsider or to consider not accepting her resignation. And I guess I would ask one other thing in closing is, it does concern me a little bit that we're creating a culture in Olentangie where leadership and excellence is not recognized or appreciated or is torn down. And regardless of your decision tonight, you all need to take a strong look at what's going on at school and what caused this to happen. So, thank you.
Mitzi Amon? Can I say that correctly?
Amon.
Amon, sorry.
Mitzi Amon, 353 Ashmore Circle East. And boy, that's a hard act to follow, Tom. But I'm going to give it a shot. I'm a lifelong Olentangie person. My grandparents went to Olentangie. My parents went to Olentangie. I went to Olentangie. I have four kids. I have one that graduated in 2009. And I have three kids that are currently attending Wyandotte Run. I'm here today to support Christine Armbrust. I want to tell a little bit of a personal story because I have a perception that probably no one in this room does. I have, one of my children has Down syndrome. Two years ago, he was a kindergartner at Wyandotte Run, worst year of my life. I've struggled with the school on a daily basis. I've struggled with the principal. I've struggled with the teachers. I never had that before. Like I said, I had a daughter that had gone there her whole school year or life, never had a conflict with the school, not one conflict. I had a conflict the entire first year. I tried everything I knew to meet in the middle to solve my problems with my child. Two years ago, I called the school in the summer and I said, "I'd like to meet with school administrators before the school year starts." The first week Christine was here, she called me. She said, "I'd like to meet with you." We were the first family she met with when she came to the school district. She welcomed me to her office. She heard, I'm sure she had an earful from others at the school about what a difficult family we were. I walked in there completely open-minded, listened to every word I said, asked what my philosophy was. And by the way, I am, my biggest issue is I want full inclusion for my special needs child. Olentangie, I don't believe at that point, and I don't speak for all the schools. I'm friends with many parents with special needs kids, and it varies depending on which school you're in. The very school, it's different. It's different. The culture's different. The approach is different. My goal for Wyandotte Run is full inclusion for those families that want it. Not all families want it. We want it for my child. She listened to me. She listened to my concerns. She asked me what my philosophy was and reasons why I wanted it. She, I mentioned a book to her about full inclusion. She followed up with me after that meeting to ask me for that book. She read that book, and I know she considered my feelings, my wishes in that book when she hired the new specialized learning center teacher. She supported everything we asked for with a win-win attitude. And I'll tell you what, I used to have IEP meetings that I walked out of every single one of them crying. Since Christine's been there, I've never had a difficult IEP meeting. It's always a win-win situation for us. And I'll tell you what, all she did was remove obstacles and provided leadership and fairness, fairness to us and our family. And it's been a perfect two years. My child is in the typical second-grade classroom, and he's well-liked. He's well-accepted. All the kids, when I walk into the school for a special event, kids are high-fiving him. That's what it was about for me. I wanted him to be included in the school, and he is, and it's because of Christine Armbrust. So, for that reason alone, I ask you to please don't accept her resignation. Thank you.
Marion Jacobs?
You guys are having this every, how often do you have these meetings that you sit here for hours and, well, you show leadership? And it's hard, and you know it is. And hearing people on different sides. Well, my name is Marion Jacobs, and I'm at 1260 Langston Drive. I am not a parent, but you have heard from parents who are just telling you exactly what you should know about Ms. Armbrust. I was shocked when I heard, so I have no prepared statements here. I feel terrible. I would like to have PowerPoints to let you know what this woman is like. I have been a teacher for many years. My gray hair shows it, doesn't it? More than 40 years. I've taught in Iowa, Egypt, Iran, Tennessee, Alabama, Maryland, Oregon. And my last 12 years were here, and Ms. Armbrust was my principal. And I have to tell you, then I have had probably 12 or more principals. So, I have some insights about what principals are like. And I have had some great ones. One of my last principals in Oregon just received a principal of the year from his state and was honored in Washington, DC with 50 other principals and one of my other former principals also. And I have to tell you that Ms. Armbrust should have been there too. She is top of my list. And I don't know if any of you happened to watch Mayor Coleman when he had his conferences downtown with some experts about what makes a good school and what makes a good principal. And this is before, this was a couple of weeks ago, I had no knowledge of any of this until a few days ago, and they were telling bullet points, so it makes a good principal, and I thought, oh, Christine Armbrust. She is very professional, but she is, you know, kids love her. She is, well, you've heard. I wish they were all here to tell you what kind of a woman she is and the time and effort that she gives, and the time and effort that you all give, you need to have some awards too, but those excellent things back there, I hope your names are on them. But she is a person, do I get 30 minutes, was that it? Okay, well, I don't know, but don't accept her resignation, just tell her she can't, okay? All right, all right.
I wasn't planning on talking. Paul Locke?
Yes. Well, everyone, I'll make this short, my name is Paul Locke, 360 Ashmore Circle West. Currently a teacher at New Albany High School where we are like Allentangie, excellent school district, okay? Ms. Armbrust, excellent principal. I had the opportunity to wear both hats, okay? A parent and a teacher. And kind of like Mitzi, we are navigating the IEP 504 room for the first time on the other side of the table. It's a whole different experience being the teacher than being the parent. Christine has done an excellent job helping me as the parent navigate this process. I was surprised how much it took me back and how much I didn't know from a parent's standpoint, what questions I should ask. I knew what to say as a teacher, I knew how to proceed as a teacher, but not as a parent. And she made it, she removed the obstacles, she was the leader in the room that said, "How are we going to make this happen?" Okay? Not, "I can't," but "we can." We can. Now, you have the power to not accept the resignation. It's a challenge, politically, that's a challenge, I understand that. Be brave, don't accept, thank you.
Okay, next up is a board action item to approve the superintendent's goals, one note. The document that was attached to the agenda, Exhibit A1, is being reformatted, so while the content is the same, the format's changing, so the final document may look different than what's on the agenda, but the content is the same. There was a misalignment to numbers, and we're correcting that alignment. Do you want a clarifying statement? Oh yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to make a clarifying statement, first and foremost, thank you to all that came forward. And I do want to say to you the same thing that I've mentioned to emails recipients, our doors open on this, we do want to talk. Because I totally appreciate your passion, I think that's what makes Allentangie what it is. But I also want to make sure you have everything, every bit of information. I know I've talked to some of you already, I know I have conversed by email, I've talked by phone. So I don't want you to think that you, one, were not heard, and number two, there is an avenue, and I would reach out and say to you, "Call me, we'll be glad to sit down and talk and to really shed some light on this situation." Some thanks.
Okay, so any other, I apologize for jumping ahead. Okay, now, back to the board action item on superintendent's goal, so again, just a clarification, that will be reformatted, but again, content, we're going to say. So I will entertain a motion to approve Board Action Item A.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have discussion to let people know, this is part of the superintendent evaluation, there's, this format comes to us from the state. And so hopefully, it'll be, it's going to be across the board, it'll be, you'll have the same evaluation every year, your goals will change, but it'll be, it's going to line up with the treasurer evaluation, it's going to line up with the principal evaluation and the teacher evaluation. So we're all going to be on the same page and you'll see the same kind of format, I also sit on the Career Center School Board, we use the same format at the Career Center School Board. So I think it's, it was developed at the statewide level and I think, having gone through this process many times, it's going to be a big help for us and we'll do evaluations twice a year instead of once a year for our superintendent and treasurer. So I just wanted to just fill everybody in on that.
Great, thank you. No further discussion, call roll please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, treasurer action items?
I don't know, do I pull an item out first or do we discuss first, because I've got both?
Let's pull, what do you got?
I just want to pull B out separate.
B? So, I recommend approval of action items A, C, D, and E. Okay, do you have a motion for A, C, D, and E?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just say on the bonds, I think that we should allocate the estimated future savings and apply it against our debt once it's, once we execute it to refinance, the 5 million.
Well, which it will, it actually will, the savings isn't a one-time lump savings. So we have a debt schedule where we look at, you know, our debt for the lifespan of that debt and comparing that to the millage that we need to pay off the debt. So what that would do is eventually decrease that millage, but it's not an immediate, an immediate decrease, it'll happen over time.
And that's how the bonds are, that's how, what happens every time we refund bonds.
Because, I mean, the savings, it's not a principal reduction savings, it's a reduction of future interest, it's more of a cash flow savings. So we won't have to raise as much because we don't have to pay as much, and so the savings do that over time. Okay, so, the quick answer is it will be, it's just maybe not the means in which we Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Recommend approval of action item B.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Call roll please. Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Superintendent Action Items?
Present Superintendent Action Items A1 through 7 and Item C.
And can you add A9 to it?
A9 to...
Yeah, the one you're doing right now.
Okay. Has to present Superintendent Action Items A1 through 7, Item 9, and Item C for approval, please.
So moved.
Yeah.
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and as a parent who's been in the district since 97, I just counted out five different principal positions that my kids have gone through, and I understand the passion that's involved. And I'd also like to thank the 10 parents and two teachers who emailed me about this issue, and I appreciate them taking the time to do that. I know some of you are in the audience because of school activities this week that I've had every week, I haven't been able to get back to you, but I'm glad that you were here tonight.
Similarly here, appreciate the input, appreciate people taking the time to come here tonight, email, express their thoughts and concerns, and it's absolutely part of the consideration set as we cast our vote.
On the contracts, I think that we just, we need to consider on the administrator contract, although that the private sector just had a 2% decrease in pay across the board, and that these were authorizing raises from 3 to 30% something. And I think that in their contracts, I think that it's sheltering the employees from the real world at the expense of taxpayers when you have us picking up the full retirement, picking up their Medicare tax, they don't have to pay anything towards that, there's an annual bonus in there for something, paid health insurance, life insurance.
We don't pay their health insurance.
But here it says paid health insurance.
No, they pay if they're on...
Even aside from that, picking up their Medicare tax and then paying their entire retirement, they're not contributing anything towards it.
Do you have this 2% private sector pay cut that you're referring to, is there a...
Social Security?
I'm sorry?
Social Security payroll tax? They don't pay Social Security, correct?
Right, and they're...
And they don't pay their retirement either, though.
Right, that was more of a, I understand where you're going. Any other discussion?
The last point was pulling out the principal from the resignation, she must be doing something right, I mean, the entire room was filled and nothing but good stories, I can't, it's like the best input you can get, I guess.
Again, I'd like to repeat what the savings was in the administrative, by eliminating the sixth administrative position, 1.2 million, and that includes any increases that we're talking about tonight.
Because people picking up those jobs that want them.
Exactly.
So one person consolidating two jobs.
Right, yep.
All right, no other discussion, call roll please. Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Present Superintendent Action Items A8, B1, 2, 3, 4, including the addendum, D, E, and F for approval, please.
Everything else?
Yeah, everything else.
Can I ask for a clarification, is it inappropriate?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of us, I just wanted to know just what happened, did you just bundle the resignation in with five other line items?
So, to be, for clarification item, the resignation was accepted, yes.
That's what it would be, I understand exactly how you guys planned it out, thank you.
That's really sad, that's very, very sad, it is. I'll remember this at election time, that's very sad.
Can I have a look at the screen?
You know what, this is, the community is, this is horrible, how can you do this to us, the parents who pay, the school taxes.
She quit.
We have to work daily. This is ridiculous.
I just want to make a point, this is, will now become your majority, it's just as amazing.
The family by popular will have that idea, and I try to like to forget, call vote.
Can we call vote?
We need a motion, second.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Entertained a motion, a vote in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Will there be any action after the executive session?
I hope not. No, there will not be. Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.